Good morning. We're going to call to order this meeting October 8th, 10:00 a.m. for our State Board of Education meeting. If you would join me for a moment of silence while we focus our hearts and our minds on why we are gathered here today. And that focus is the children of Arkansas, the students of Arkansas, ensuring that we do everything possible for them to get the best education and live the best life possible. So if you will join me for a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. With that, we'll get started. Our first item on the agenda are resolutions. The very first one is the Arkansas Safe Schools Week. Okay, one moment.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Key, distinguished members of the board, thank you so much for the privilege to be before you today. We're going to talk, I'm going to ask you to support not only a resolution focusing on Arkansas Safe Schools Week, but to also present you with a proclamation for the governor concerning bullying. Speaking of the governor, I think everybody in here knows that he is a true champion of school safety. And I want to personally thank him for his commitment and dedication to school safety. I also want to thank the members of the Safe Schools Committee, the Division of Elementary and Secondary Education Committee. I also want to thank the staff at the Arkansas Center for School Safety and all of our superintendents and administrators and staff for everything that they do to make our schools safe. So let me read the resolution to you. Whereas more than forty-nine, more than 4,790,000 students attend public schools in Arkansas. And whereas a safe and secure environment enhances student learning. And whereas approximately 69,603 administrators, faculty, and staff at Arkansas's public schools are committed to providing a safe and secure learning environment for all students. And whereas more than 405 school resource officers assist in ensuring students remain safe at public schools. And whereas the Division of Elementary and Secondary Education, Arkansas Center for School Safety, and Arkansas Safe Schools Association have partnered together to provide school safety resources and promote a safe educational environment. And whereas the Safe Schools Committee is charged with developing model policies and procedures that may ensure a safe and productive learning environment of students and school employees for recommending to the State Board of Education any necessary rules and regulations for ensuring a safe school environment and for recommending to the House Committee on education and the Senate Committee on Education any necessary legislation for ensuring a safe school environment. And whereas local and state law enforcement agencies and organizations provide support to school districts. Now therefore be it resolved, we the members of the Arkansas State Board of Education recognize the week of October 17 through 23, 2020 as Arkansas State School Week. I'd also like to take this moment to read the proclamation from the governor concerning bullying. Bullying is obviously very much on everybody's mind and is a critical element to any school safety strategy. So according to the governor's proclamation, "To all whom these presents come greetings. Whereas bullying is physical, verbal, sexual, or emotional harm or intimidation intentionally directed at a person or group of people. And whereas bullying occurs in neighborhoods, playgrounds, schools, and through technology. And whereas cyberbullying can occur through text messages, rumors sent via email or posted on social networking sites and embarrassing pictures, videos, websites, or fake profiles. And whereas various researchers have concluded that bullying is the most common form of violence affecting millions of Arkansas American children and adolescents with or without disabilities. Whereas targets of bullying are more likely to acquire physical, emotional, and learning problems. And students who are repeatedly bullied often fear activities such as riding the bus, going to school, and attending community events. And whereas children who witness bullying often feel less secure, more fearful, and intimidated. Now therefore, I Asa Hutchinson, Governor of the State of Arkansas, by virtue of the authority invested in me in the laws of the State of Arkansas do hereby proclaim October 2020 as National Bullying Prevention Month in Arkansas. Across the state, and I encourage my fellow citizens to be engaged in a variety of awareness and prevention activities designed to make our community safer and kinder for all children, adolescents, and adults. In testimony whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the great seal of the State of Arkansas to be affixed the second day of October in the year of our Lord 2020."
Thank you, Dr. Mays. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
I don't know if we're going to get a photo op that or not. Okay? Okay? All right? Appreciate the governor and those who have worked on this resolution and just understanding the importance of making sure that our children are safe in learning environments. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Mays. Okay, next item.
Madam Chair, if I may, I did ask Courtney to, since she's overseeing our overall effort in the department on school safety, if she could give you a brief update.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Secretary Key, members of the board. Courtney Solis Ford for the department. And yes, just want to echo all of the thoughts and comments made by Dr. Cheryl May and how much we appreciate our continued partnership with the Safe Schools Center and the work of the Safe Schools Committee following along after the governor's Safe Schools Commission and implementing those recommendations and working to ensure that our students and schools are a safe environment for them. I'd also like to, with your permission, introduce Ms. Suzanne Jones. She recently has joined me in taking on the role of supporting this work and leading the school safety efforts. And so I believe in the next few months and year to come, you will be seeing a lot of us as we bring to you more information about what the committee is doing, the legislative recommendations and rule recommendations that are being suggested and implemented, and the resources that Suzanne in particular will be working with the Safe Schools Center to bring to school districts and making sure that we are carrying out the vision and the mission and the goals of the resolution and the proclamation in keeping students safe. So just want to say thank you and let you all know about Suzanne.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other changes to the agenda?
Madam Chair, this isn't a change to the agenda, just to let y'all know that the governor has a cabinet meeting this afternoon at 2:30. I know we have a short agenda, but if the meeting goes beyond a little after 2 o'clock, I'll be stepping out. Dr. Refra will be stepping in to finish out the meeting.
All right, thank you. Okay, do we have any questions or anything to pull from the consent agenda? Okay, seeing done. Looking for a motion. I have a motion to approve by Ms. Newton, seconded by Ms. Chambers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes.
Madam Chair, we do need the board to vote to adopt that resolution that Dr. May presented.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to vote for approving the resolution?
Second.
I have a motion to approve by Ms. Newton, seconded by Ms. Woods. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Key. Okay, let's get down to our action agenda. All right, Ms. Lori Freino, if you would. State Board hearing of revocation of license, Stephen Barnett.
Thank you, Ms. Dean. Lori Freino with Department of Education. I would like to read for the board the procedures for the hearing that will be before you today. This is the matter of Mr. Steve Barnett. He's seeking a waiver of a disqualifying offense. Mr. Barnett is here as well as is Amy Douglas, who will be representing the agency in this matter. Each party will have the opportunity to present an opening statement of no longer than five minutes, beginning with the representative from the division. The chairperson of the State Board may, for good cause shown, allow either party additional time. Each party will be provided 15 minutes to present their cases, beginning with the representative for the division. And again, the chair may afford additional time at her discretion. Every witness giving oral testimony will need to be sworn in by the chair. And there can be direct examination, cross-examination, and questioning by the board at any time during the hearing. The division shall have the burden of proving by preponderance of the evidence that the, that cause for the proposed licensure action exists. After both parties have presented their cases, the State Board may allow each party to present rebuttal testimony. And each party will then be given five minutes for a closing argument, ending with the division's representative. And of course, the parties do not have to take up all this time. That is just, that is just the guideline. And again, you know, the, there is an opportunity for additional time if deemed appropriate by the chair of the board.
Thank you, Ms. Freino. Let me swear in everyone that plans on giving testimony.
Okay.
If you raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Douglas.
I'm Amy Douglas for the division. I am going to waive my opening statement.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Barnett, good morning. Thank you for joining us.
Good morning. Yes, back in 2009, I did, I got charged with a conspiracy to defraud the government through a first-time home loan. So a childhood friend of mine contacted me and asked me, did I know anything about it? And I told him, no, I didn't know. We was entering.
Mr. Barnett, would you move closer to the mic and lift it up so we can pick you up on Zoom as well? So we can hear you better. Thank you.
Yeah, all right. Back in 2009, I got charged with the first-time home loan conspiracy to defraud the government, respect the claims. A childhood friend of mine contacted me and asked me, did I know anything about it? And I told him, no, I don't know. He said, well, Google it and see what you think about it. So I Googled and I seen it. It was saying that you had to purchase a home, but some people would be audited and some wouldn't. So he said, well, I think I'm gonna try it, man. This is my last year of college. I ain't really got no money. You know, I'm gonna turn my name in. So after going back and forth, I eventually, you know, considered doing it too. So once I did that, I took me and his name and put it in a mailbox, you know, to the people that was doing it. So once that happened, the IRS started doing the investigation. So they contacted just random people who did it. So when the lady contacted me from the IRS, I went and talked to her and I told her what I did. So she said, well, Mr. Barnett, she said, I see you're not a big fish in this pool, but based on your testimony that you went and took some names over and put them in a mailbox, I have to send your name into Washington, DC. She says, so just go on with your life. And a couple of years later, I got indicted. So she just said, it was based upon, you know, the testimony that I gave that I took the names over there. So it's like I participated in the scheme.
Thank you, Mr. Barnett. Ms. Douglas?
So as Mr. Barnett said, so in 2014, he pled guilty to conspiracy to defraud the government. In 2014, Mr. Barnett was found guilty of conspiracy to defraud the government. He completed a three-year federal probation. In 2018, he was denied a provisional professional teaching license. A letter was sent to the school, I believe it was Kip Delta at the time, as well as the educator because of this disqualifying offense. Somehow, through the division, that information did not get uploaded into the Arkansas Education licensure system. Mr. Barnett continued to work. 2020, he comes up for a background check. It is determined, he is originally cleared, and then it is later determined, a few days later, that, wait a minute, this is equivalent to a disqualifying offense that we have under 617410, number 26, which is theft of services. He was then sent a denial letter. I believe you received in your packet his sentencing order, you have his admission that he was indicted and his involvement in that particular ordeal. We have sent him a denial letter. He's here asking for a waiver. The board has the options to, when considering a waiver, to consider the circumstances, the age at which the crime or incident was committed, the circumstances surrounding the crime or incident, the length of time since the crime, subsequent work history, employment references, character references, or any other evidence the applicant demonstrates. So it is our position that is completely up to you whether you want to grant Mr. Barnett's waiver.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Douglas. Mr. Barnett, did you have anything you want to add?
Yes, I would just like to thank the board for allowing me.
Mike, if you can get as close as possible.
Okay. Yes, I would just like to thank the board for allowing me this opportunity to be here. I made a mistake in the past that I'm not proud of. I'm looking to put it behind me and move forward with my life, doing what I love to do, that's teach and coach. It is my hope that the board will grant me this waiver to allow me to continue to support my kids and support aspiring youth in my local community.
Thank you, Mr. Barnett. Ms. Douglas?
I have nothing further.
Okay, thank you. All right, board, we have heard Ms. Douglas from the Department of Education, and we've heard Mr. Barnett's story and the details. Do we have any questions or comments? I'll start with Mr. Sutton.
Have any questions? No.
Okay, Ms. Woods?
Mr. Barnett, have you been teaching, sorry. Have you been teaching as a non-licensed teacher?
Yes.
In the last few years? Okay, and then as it relates to the crime, did you actually benefit and take the money, or were you just a conspirator in the process?
I got the $7,580 and paid it back.
Okay. That's up for me.
Is that okay? Ms. Moore? Ms. Chambers? Ms. Newton?
One question for Ms. Douglas. Does the department have a recommendation?
The department has already deemed him disqualified. So other than that, we do not have a further recommendation.
Okay. Ms. McFetrich? Dr. Hill? Okay, do we have any further discussion? With that, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I didn't hear how much you said that was. I didn't hear.
The first-time home loan buy was 7,000. It was between 7,000 to 7,500.
Okay, all right.
You said you paid it back?
Yes, ma'am, I paid it back and forth, yes.
Okay. Mr. Lookadoo, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to overlook you. No? Okay. Well, with that. Then I'm ready for a motion.
May I ask a question on process?
Sure.
Just to be clear on shall and will and what our options are, could you remind us of that, please?
So the statute says you shall revoke or non-renew a license, but it also says that if an educator come requesting a waiver, that you consider those circumstances, and then it's up to you whether you want to grant the waiver, or if you want to grant the waiver with stipulations or deny the waiver.
Any further questions? Discussion? Ready for a motion?
I move with grant the waiver.
Okay, have a motion to grant the waiver by Dr. Hill, seconded by Ms. Chambers. All in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion passes. Congratulations, Mr. Barnett.
I will prepare an order and have this entered into ales.
Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Douglas.
I do have a comment.
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Barnett, I appreciate you being in the teaching profession and how valuable you are to the schools for African-American males to be in the classroom. It's very, very important. And if I can assist you in any way, and we all make mistakes, I'm always sitting here because of the grace of God. And you know, that's grace not made to come to you, it's made to go through you. So I hope you will understand this and recruit other men to come and do it because of the crisis that we see out in our schools. I want you to be involved in being a remedy. You heard all the violence and things going on, that you take this as an opportunity to step up and really get people in the game to help you, okay? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Barnett.
Amen to that, Dr. Hill.
Okay. Moving on to item number two, consideration of charter authorizing panel decision to approve amendment request for Arkansas Virtual Academy. That's Ms. Tracy Webb.
Good morning, Tracy Webb, Charter Office.
Good morning.
The next item is regarding the amendment request for Arkansas Virtual Academy. Excuse me. In September, the charter authorizing panel approved an amendment request for Arkansas Virtual Academy to increase their enrollment cap from 4,000 to 5,500. By unanimous vote, the panel voted to approve the request. The State Board has the option to review the amendment request and conduct a hearing at the next State Board meeting regarding the amendment request. And Ms. Amy Johnson, the superintendent, is on the Zoom if you have any questions.
Welcome, Ms. Johnson. Okay, do we have any questions or comments? We'll start with Dr. Hill. Ms. McFetrich? Ms. Newton? Ms. Chambers? Ms. Moore?
Did we already approve enrollment cap this year?
Yes, I'm hoping to not become a permanent fixture in your meetings, but we have been capped at 4,000, and we have just over 100 students on our waitlist and have had those students waitlisted since August 30th. So we met the original increase of 1,000, which you all heard earlier in the fall very quickly, much more quickly than we expected. And so we do have a waitlist with several applications in queue as well.
Thank you. As far as teacher capacity goes, are you all prepared to take on additional students?
Yes, so we're fully staffed right now, and we have a plan to continue to staff in batches basically of 500 students. So we have a plan to, we already have job postings up and are already vetting candidates for any potential influx of students. And we have a plan to step out those, that hiring process as we see enrollments come in.
Will these students, if the cap was granted, would these students be able to start in the middle of the semester right now, or are you onboard at semester?
Yes, so our plan is to onboard students well through the month of November. Once we get to that point, as you all are well aware, if we're going to be granting a grade, we want to make sure that we have that student's mastery in mind. And so we'll start to narrow enrollments then and then open up again in January at the semester. But we do have plans in place to do a rolling onboarding. We have some advisors and staff that keep an eye on that new student influx and do orientations and walk to class with.
Okay, well, I guess, looking at your, hearing you have at that, 100% increase, do you all expect a big influx? I mean, why are you asking for 1,500 when you just have 100 right now?
So the real reason we're asking for that is for some runway. You know, when we can't really predict what the virus is going to do, what virtual options are going to do with longevity, just simply for the fact of continually reappearing for the charter panel in front of you all, to be able to have some of that cushion so that we can be available, especially in the need of, you know, smaller school districts or large populations of students if the virus numbers do increase, where we have shutdowns or longer-term quarantines, or we might have a larger bulk of students that would need to come to us.
Okay, I know it's very challenging for all of us in this time, and I know that certainly y'all are facing challenges as you, I'm a more student. So I am a little hesitant for us to keep going, but I understand this is an option that parents want. For the department, how long is this being requested for? I guess when is their next, when are they up for renewal again?
I believe it's being requested through their renewal, and I do not have that information with me. Ms. Johnson, do you know when you renew?
I believe it's 2025. We were just renewed last December. And I know that, I wanted to offer this as well, I know, you know, consideration of our academic progress for our students is always a top concern for us and for the charter panel and for you all as a board as well. When we appeared in front of the State Board last January for our renewal, it was requested of us to appear annually to report on that student growth. And we will definitely be doing that, you know, each year to also provide not only updates in enrollment, but also those updates for academic performance review annually.
Okay, thank you. That makes me feel better.
All right, Ms. Woods? Mr. Sutton?
Where's the home base? It's in Little Rock? Okay.
Their office is in Little Rock.
Little Rock, yeah. Our offices are in Little Rock.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Johnson, similar to that teacher capacity question, but what is the average number of students that teachers have on their roster? Maybe elementary and in secondary?
So we have a 60-to-1 ratio in the elementary. We have a 47-to-1 ratio in the middle school. We lowered that ratio just in the last few years just because of that transition period. If you've had much exposure with middle school, you know, that's a tough time. They're not really elementary, they're not really high school, so we found some success in lowering that. And then our high school ratios are 150-to-1.
So you said 60 for elementary, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Well, that bodes another question. Does the state have limits on student-teacher ratios for, on virtual?
They do not for virtual, totally virtual programs. For in-class, that would be 154 grades, 5 through 8 would be the teacher load limit. And then for elementary classrooms, of course, there is a limit of kindergarten is 20 to 1. First through third is 25 to 1 and then fourth through sixth is 28 to 1. But in all virtual programs, those do not apply.
Are you considering such limits?
I think there's some discussion about just the limits in general, but at this point, I'm not sure.
Oh, okay, thank you.
If I may, Mr. Sutton, that is a question that, as you can imagine, is getting bandied about quite a bit right now in a topic regarding, because of the nature of this school year, the end of last school year, and so many districts having virtual options. So it is part of the broader conversation of, you know, what's, what limits may or may not need to exist. So it's, I'm sure that either through rules, changes in the future, you will all see that if those changes are made. So I expect we'll be talking about it quite a bit more in the months to come.
Do you have any further questions or comments or discussion? With that, I'm looking for a motion to either review or not to review.
I move to not review.
We have a motion to not review by Ms. Chambers, seconded by Ms. McFetrich. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion passes. All right, and then we have Bryant School District.
The Bryant School District is requesting a one-year standards for accreditation waiver for library media specialist for the 2020-21 school year. On August 3rd, they had a library media specialist resign. They would like to share a library media specialist with another building in the district and therefore they would need a waiver for the ratio to be able to share that library media specialist. And we do have Dr. Karen Walters, Superintendent of Bryant, and Jeremy Lassiter, the district attorney.
Welcome, Ms. Walters and Mr. Lassiter. Do we have any? Okay, thank you. Welcome, thank you. Dr. Hill, we'll start reviewing questions. McFetrich? Okay.
I did not see in our packet that the board, your school board, approved this. Can you speak to that?
The board approval is not needed for one-year standards for accreditation waivers, only for 1240 waivers.
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Board approval is not needed for the one-year standards for accreditation waivers, only for 1240 waivers.
Madam Chair, if I could add, our board did not take action on this, but this was discussed at our board meeting and they are aware of our request.
Thank you, Ms. Walters. Ms. Newton?
Dr. Walters, the person that you have chosen to share both libraries, is she going to have a para? And I saw that you were going to provide a para in the one where they left. Is she going to have a para in both buildings?
So Ms. Newton, the full-time building that she currently is assigned to, they have two library media specialists there. We have a full-time para in the building where we have the opening right now. So the library media specialist from the high school is going over once a week to meet with the para that is there to go over, I guess you might say, lessons for the week. Since it is a middle school, we are not, we are not scheduling classes to go to the library as we do in elementary. And actually during this time, we're not even doing that in elementary with the pandemic. So she is being a support to teachers, but like I said, she does have another full-time library media specialist at her home station.
Okay, all right, that was my question. Okay, thank you. Ms. Chambers, now, Ms. Moore, Dr. Moore?
And, oh, what's going on? And so just to be clear, this library media specialist is aware, they're all aware of this being requested and this concern at this point in time and are okay with moving forward as is?
I had a little trouble hearing you. Did you say are all the library?
Sorry, just the people involved are aware of the waiver being requested and at that point.
So the library media specialist that's going to Bethel, that's already happened? So yes, ma'am. She's aware and she was very gracious to agree to help us out.
Okay, and plans are for next year to hire a library media specialist at that building? Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. In fact, we will even advertise at the end of this month. If we can find a December grad that could maybe take a teaching position, I believe we will have several in-house candidates, several teachers. It's just at this time, we are having such a hard time finding teachers that unless we can find a December grad, we won't be able to fill it until next year.
If that makes sense, thank you.
Ms. Woods? Okay. Mr. Sutton? Mr. Lookadoo?
I'd just more of a comment. I appreciate you saying that even in December, you know, you could be looking for someone because I think this has been kind of a growing trend of library media specialists and looking for these waivers. And it concerns me a little bit. Either, you know, those qualified applicants are just not out there and what are we doing to push for that? Because it is such an important role and it can be such a useful piece. So I just appreciate you saying you're even looking at the December mark.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If we have no more comments or discussion, I'm looking for a motion. I have a motion to approve the waiver by Ms. Woods, seconded by Ms. Chambers. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes. Okay, Ms. Webb?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board.
Thank you, Dr. Walters.
The next item is a one-year standards for accreditation waiver for the Shirley School District for kindergarten class size. They currently have 23 students on-site, which is one over the limit. Kindergarten class sizes are 20 students or 22 with a part-time para professional. And I believe they have two para professionals in the classroom. One is assisting a special needs student, but the other is a full-time para professional in the building. We do have Ms. Tyrene Garner, the superintendent, on the Zoom if you have any questions.
Welcome, Ms. Gardner. Do we have any questions? We'll start with Mr. Lookadoo. Questions or comments? Mr. Sutton? Ms. Woods?
One question, is that current second para professional, is it a one-to-one ratio?
Dr. Moore?
Yes, I do have a question. Is this, is the teacher providing online instruction as well or just in person?
We have three virtual kindergarten students, but they're taught by another teacher. So she's only providing onsite instruction.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Chambers? Ms. Newton? Ms. McFetrich?
I'm just curious, has your number stabilized or are you still adding students? What is the current status of your number?
Ms. Gardner?
Are you asking about my, we have at this time currently 325. We ended the year last year with 330 K-12. Is that, was that what the question was?
No, I was just curious, how many do you have in the classroom now? Has that number stabilized or used?
Yes, yes, we have 23 at this time in the classroom. And we've moved them to a larger room where they have plenty of social distance.
Dr. Hill? Okay, well, with that, if we have no further, oh, Ms. Newton?
I didn't think of this till you asked that question. If their numbers go over 23, this waiver would only apply at 23? Or would it, if they were to get another student, what would happen then?
The waiver would still apply.
So this would be an unlimited number?
It could, but I do think that Ms. Gardner has a plan if she does, if more than, just a few more kindergartners enroll, Ms. Gardner?
If we were to go more than two over, we would either hire another teacher or we would move our staff around, assign. We have two virtual teachers at elementary and at this time, we need those two. But if more students come back, we may not need two virtual teachers and we could move one of those to kindergarten.
Okay, so this would be for a max of 24 then?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Seeing none, I'm ready for a motion. I have a motion to approve the waiver by Ms. McFetrich, seconded by Mr. Sutton. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gardner. Have a good day. All right, Ms. Webb?
The next item is a Act 1240 waiver request for the Sylum Springs School District for educator licensure and class size and teaching load. On the Zoom, we have Mr. Jody Wiggins, Superintendent, Kelly Zebek, Director of Assessment Accountability, and Amy Carter, Curriculum Director, to present the request.
Welcome, thank you for joining us today. We'll start with Ms. McFetrich. Okay, Ms. Newton?
I understood the asking for art and music to be able to be done by your elementary teachers, but I'm unclear on the 5'8" class size and teaching load, what your request is. Could you explain that a little bit more?
Yes, ma'am. Class size and teaching load, we are just asking to be on the same accountability level as the virtual charters. And I heard Ms. Johnson say earlier that her middle school had 47 to 1 ratios. And we have, it's very logistically challenging in a very short period of time to try to offer onsite instruction and offer a brand-new Virtual Academy AICW as well. And so we have some teachers, 5 through 12 especially, that are doing onsite instruction and virtual classes. And we have those classes, those virtual classes as small as possible for our core teachers. And, but we are over slightly in a couple of areas. And the 150, I think the most we have for one of our teachers when you combine onsite and virtual is 158. But the logistics of trying to work all of that out with two separate schedules, running two separate schools with the same faculty, has become very challenging. At the beginning of the year, as you might expect, we had a flood of students interested in Virtual Academy. And so we had to try to establish those two different master schedules. Since then, of the 620 or so that we had signed up for virtual, we've had a considerable number decide that they wanted to come back on campus. So our numbers have actually dropped considerably since we put in this waiver request. We are currently down at around 475 K-12 that have decided to go virtual and stay. We have a desire to keep that Virtual Academy going into the future. We see that as a need for our district and we just want to have the same playing field as our virtual charters that we're competing against.
So, but you have teachers that are over the 150 that are doing both virtual and onsite, but you have no onsite that are over?
No, we do not have any onsite that are solely onsite that are over 150. Or if we do, we do pay them extra. We do not currently, from my knowledge, have any, like Billy is shaking her head, yes. So we may have one or two onsite that we, no?
No, that is correct. We do not have any on at this time.
Okay, all right. Are you considering a max number on your?
We have not established a max number, but our max numbers currently, our class sizes are below what Ms. Johnson had described in her building, her max numbers. We do not have anybody at 60 to 1, which she had mentioned at the elementary level. And so we are below those numbers. And we, going forward, we will establish a maximum number. I know with the onsite providers that we are working with, they had given us some general guidelines back in the summer as to what they thought that teachers could handle with their curriculum. And the 60 to 1 seemed to be standard at the elementary levels. And then there was varying, varying thoughts on what middle school and high school teachers would be able to do if the curriculum was online.
You know, I can understand if a teacher is all virtual, you know, setting those limits. But when you've got a mix of trying to do onsite and virtual, it's different. And so I'm very uncomfortable with the, with the class size and teaching load limit, especially not setting a max and just realizing that we're hearing from teachers all over the state that are trying to do both and they are overwhelmed. And when we talk about upping a number limit on that, that just makes me uncomfortable.
Ma'am, I understand it. And to be honest, all of our teachers are overwhelmed because our onsite teachers are trying to do remote teaching as well. So they have a mixture, even our onsite-only teachers have a mixture of onsite and remote students that they're trying to reach and teach. So all of our teachers are overwhelmed this year, to be honest. We do not have, we are not going over on individual classes onsite. And so there are things like an eighth-grade math class that might have over that 30 on virtual that ends up putting that teacher over when it combines virtual and onsite. So it may be one or two virtual classes that are slightly over what we would have in a normal classroom. But to try to move a whole nother teacher into virtual that period causes us some scheduling issues. And so that's why we're putting in the request. And again, there is a provision for us doing that and paying those teachers per child for those extra students. And we can do that. We were just asking for the same, the same playing field as our virtual charter friends have.
You know, you're thinking about the virtual charter friends, they are doing all virtual. They don't, their teachers are not trying to do both, you know? And that's, I think that's where my feelings of being uncomfortable with this on the teacher side comes.
Thank you, Ms. Newton. Ms. Chambers?
Just building on what Ms. Newton was talking about, I have similar concerns. Is there anything that you would suggest as you think about your request that would set limits on some of the exposure that we're talking about for the teachers that makes it first and foremost more doable for the teachers, but something that we'd feel comfortable approving and not setting a precedent that is going to be even more tedious for the teacher?
I'm sorry, was that directed to me? I couldn't hear the first part of your question.
I'm sorry, it was directed at you. The question is, sometimes when a waiver request comes to us that we have concerns about, the requister is able to kind of think through and tailor, maybe set limits, offer some suggestions that make it, allow us as a board to feel more comfortable that there are, there are limits to what this will impose on the teacher. Do you have, have you talked about, do you have any suggestions on how you might shape your request a little differently to impose some limits on what these teachers are bearing as load?
I would say that the limit that Ms. Johnson mentioned earlier on elementary 60 to 1 is, that's kind of the way we were, that's the direction we were headed in establishing that for next year. And we don't have anybody at that level right now. As far as the class load, I don't know what an appropriate number is. I had some onsite or on, online curriculum providers tell me that they had high school and middle school teachers teaching as many as 200, 240 students virtually. I don't know that that's reasonable. Our highest one right now is 158 and that's combining virtual and onsite. Some of our virtual teachers only have one class virtually. They are not over. We have some that have four to five classes virtually and then one to two on campus. And those are the ones who are very close because we may have slightly more in an individual class virtually. I would suggest that that, that limit may be on the actual class size and possibly the number of classes they can teach. Currently, if we had someone onsite, we are on a block schedule, that complicates that. Currently, if we had someone onsite, we, we, we are on a block schedule, that complicates things as well. Uh, so we have eight periods per day instead of seven. And so if you figure an, an, an average teacher in our schedule that had, uh, six or seven classes, uh, they could go over that one-fifty very quickly. And so when we start combining those and trying to work out that, you know, we have small numbers in virtual, and if we have thirty-five, or thirty, or thirty-three sign up for ninth grade English, it's, it's more efficient to use one teacher to teach that virtual class with an online curriculum. And so that can put us over, that's, those small numbers in individual classes are what can put us over. I'm not sure that-
I'm sorry, Mr. Wiggins, I would like to add too that our teachers who are doing both virtual and onsite have time during the day dedicated strictly to virtual. We have not put, um, the same number of onsite classes on them and then added virtual to them. Um, so they have class periods that are dedicated strictly to, um, virtual instruction for that time period, in order to, you know, help them reach out to students and, and do all the things they need to do, um, during that time.
Our attorney has indicated that with the new 1240 rules that the board does have the ability to change the request, that the school doesn't have to do that.
I don't know if Ms. Newton or anyone else has a perspective. I don't have a frame of reference on what makes this more manageable. Uh, and, and obviously, we're all learning as we go, but I thought, but we all are getting some very impassioned communications from teachers, that the hybrid in particular is so, so difficult. And, and realizing that the teaching loads, before we got into this moment, were, were difficult enough, just looking for what keeps it reasonable as we approve these waivers. And I don't know if anyone has any suggestions that help us feel more comfortable with that.
I, I'm just still hesitant because this is not all virtual. This is the combination, and that's what gives me pause. And the district does have an option, if they go over, they can pay those particular teachers. So if we weren't, if we'd said no on this waiver, the district still has an option of what they can do if they wanted to keep going this route. They could pay those teachers that, that, uh, chose to have a hundred and fifty-eight students, and that could have-
Do the teachers get to opt in, and to who takes this on?
Our, our teachers did opt in. They volunteered to do the virtual courses, with the knowledge that we were not going to, at, at the time, we thought that the automatic waivers covered, uh, the class size and the class load. We were told later, after we had established, after we had gone through our parent meetings and asked for volunteers from our staff, we were told that the one-fifty did not apply through the automatic waivers. Um, so that's why we are bringing this to you all. The class size in, in, in and of itself is waived currently, but we are afraid that that will go away when the state of emergency goes away. And I think that's going to be an issue for, for schools across the state that are, that are offering virtual classes now. And just for clarification, I, I heard the word blended or the word hybrid. We offer three, well, two things. Our onsite is blended or hybrid, because our onsite teachers have remote classes, or remote kids who are quarantined or, or isolated because of positive tests, or because they're just staying at home now. The virtual is a separate school. It is a separate curriculum. It is a prepared curriculum and an online curriculum. And those kids and those teachers who are teaching those classes are just virtual for those classes. So if our teachers are split, they're only split in their schedule. They're not split in individual classes. So they have, may have four virtual classes that are completely virtual, and they may have two onsite. And so those are the teachers that we are talking about.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wiggins. Um, Dr. Pfeffer, you have something to add to that?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and, um, the questions you all are asking today are some of the same questions that we've been, um, discussing internally, but also with our school districts. I think since, um, we, districts started planning for the return to school, um, you know, we know that different districts implemented various options in, um, after visiting with families, um, and, and there are still some inconsistencies when we use words, and, uh, Mr. Wiggins just talked about blended versus hybrid. Virtual, um, that can be both onsite and offsite, or virtual, that's totally remote learning. And, um, so, so these are some things that we're working to try to help really bring together. Mr. Wiggins talked a little bit about his concern that if, um, that, that there are some things that have been waived, um, under the emergency declaration, there are some things that have been waived under the streamlined Act 1240 waivers. And so we're working to clear up those things so that districts are assured of the waivers that are in place through this school year. We're also looking to see, are there some things that may need to stay in place longer to allow districts to continue these virtual options? Um, I think in terms of the questions that you're asking today, and Mr. Wiggins just pointed out, there really is a difference between a teacher who is teaching only remote virtual learners, um, especially if it's in an asynchronous manner where there's not that direct interaction during specified time periods all day, every day, like we have when we're onsite or when we have the synchronous learning. And so I think today for us, I don't know that we have a strong enough understanding of exactly what Salem Springs is planning to do. We could work with the district and, between now and next month's meeting, to, to get some more information and to have a clearer picture of what their virtual proposal looks like. I know that we have a couple of district conversion virtuals, um, charters like Springdale School of Innovation in Fayetteville, Virtual Academy, and I do believe they do have a limit that's higher than one-fifty, but I do believe that there is a limit that maybe we could visit with them about, talk a little bit more about with, um, Mr. Wiggins, so that could be an option if, um, everyone wanted to discuss that. But we, we do plan to continue having this conversation because districts really are, um, grappling with what's best. And what's best in Salem Springs may look different than Fayetteville, may look different than, uh, Magnolia, so we know that. And we know that, that you understand that as well. So I want to help the district, but I also want all of us to feel confident and, um, you know, be able for teachers to understand as well that this is not something that we just want to keep piling on top of them. So I, I just feel like there needs to be a better understanding on everyone's part before we start making too many decisions about long-term waivers.
Thank you, Dr. Pfeffer. So with that in mind, I'll go ahead and finish. If there's any more questions, Dr. Moore?
So just to understand, this is a one-year waiver. Does this end at the end of the school year?
That is correct.
Okay, so we're just stopping the next, okay, and, okay.
Ms. Woods?
Yeah.
Okay, Ms. Doc, um, Mr. Sutton?
Well, based on what Ivy was saying and some of the other concerns, is there such thing as a conditional waiver? That after further study, if that's what Ivy is saying?
I think what we have an option to do is probably maybe to table it until next month. That, that may be an option, but Dr. Pfeffer?
So I may, um, have misguided you, Legal has just said that we need to check when there are ninety days, because by statute, once a, a request is made, there can, there's a ninety-day time period by which you have to take action. So, you know, depending on what you decide today, um, we could allow the district to come back if they wanted to, um, look and see if there are other virtual charters that do have some maximum numbers that they've set and have a rationale for what that might look like. Um, you know, I understand that if, if teachers agree to do something and they realize that there may be different conditions for them, then, um, you know, that might make all of you feel more comfortable, but, um, I don't think, um, it could probably be tabled, so I do apologize for that.
If we were to deny the waiver, could they come back next month with an, another request?
Yeah, Mary Claire Hyatt with the department. Sorry that Legal always has to throw a wrench in, in the plans. So the ninety days will expire before the November meeting. So the way I see it, there are kind of two courses we can take. You guys can vote today, um, deny or approve, or deny in part, approve in part. Or, um, the district could withdraw its request and then resubmit it. They can resubmit later this afternoon, which would restart the ninety-day clock. And then we can, since we've already done a lot of vetting, we could put it on the November agenda. So, um, up to the district how it wants to proceed, um, and, and the board.
Mary Claire, I'm looking at this.
May I ask a question?
Yes, one moment, Mr. Wiggins. Go ahead, Ms. Woods.
So are we using the August eleventh date for the waiver? I'm just looking at the file.
Yes, so right-
So it literally expires the day before our next meeting?
Yes, and so right now, and this is something I think we're having a lot of internal conversations about, right now, the way that the law reads, the day they submit it is when the clock starts ticking, and we do a lot of work with the districts on the front end. And so hopefully, eventually, we'll be able to kind of play around with that, but right now, yeah, it expires the day before.
Okay, so with that in mind, um, Doc, um, Mr. Wiggins, go ahead, Mr. Wiggins. What were you going to-
So there's two parts to the waiver request. Uh, one is licensure, and one is class load and teaching load. I would like to request that there at least be a partial approval, uh, for the licensure, because we have hit October one, and we are trying to get our licensure issues, uh, fixed at this point. And so, um, that would help us now, uh, and I, I don't think that that is out of line. I also, I, I may be misguided. My impression was that, uh, the virtual charters and the, the online high schools do not have limits, uh, imposed upon them. I think some of them have voluntarily established limits, but my impression was that they did not have limits. And I may be wrong in that, and if somebody wants to correct me, that would, that would be fine. Uh, but we would happily reapply for that portion, uh, if we could, if we could at least get the licensure portion approved today.
Thank you, Mr. Wiggins. Okay, so with that in mind, we have the option of, um, partial approval of the, just approval of the licensure portion. And, um, he said that they're willing to withdraw the other, um, request. And then it'll be put on the November, it can be put on the November agenda. So with that, do I have a motion? Okay, we have a motion to approve the licensure portion by Ms. Newton, seconded by Ms. Chambers. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion passes, uh, for the licensure. And, uh, Mr. Wiggins, um, I'm sure someone from the department will be in contact with you, and we'll see you in November.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Ms. Zebek. Did I say it correctly? Oh, she's gone.
Yes, that's good.
I did? Okay, good. All right, thank you for joining us today. All right, Ms. Webb, we have another in Batesville.
The next item is an Act 1240 waiver request for the Batesville School District for daily and weekly planning periods, um, for grades six through twelve. Dr. Michael Hester is here in person to present his request.
All right, thank you. Welcome, Dr. Hester.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioner Key, all directors. Thank you for, uh, listening, and, uh, we want to say hi from Batesville today. So thank you for your work and for everything that you've been doing, and, uh, we are excited about, uh, the things that we're learning and the ways that, uh, things that we've learned to use for the future. And we appreciate things that we've been doing that we don't get to do anymore. So, uh, it's been a, a very learning experience, so thank you again for hearing us today. All right, uh, we do have a presentation. I don't know if we can put that up, but, um, uh, what I wanted to say is, um, this is the 1240 waiver request, uh, that involves teacher planning time. If you go to the next slide. Statute six seventeen one- Okay, uh, there's only like two other slides, so we should be good. Uh, statute six seventeen one fourteen that deals with, um, teacher plan time. Uh, this request is just for this year to try to get us through this, uh, COVID things. We are on a, we have gone to an A-B block. We were on an A-B modified block. But modified means on Fridays, we had all eight or nine periods, if you count the activity period. And so, uh, we went to just an all A-B block, and that's a two-week cycle. That means eighty minutes of plan every other day for our teachers. So one week, you would have two days of a hundred and sixty minutes, and the second week of the cycle, you'd have two forty. In the spirit of the law, that averaged to two hundred minutes per week. But what the law says is shall be forty minutes a day slash two hundred minutes a week. And so in the spirit of the law, we were averaging two hundred minutes a week with an A-B two-week cycle. In the letter of the law, it's in violation, so that's why we're here in front of you today. The reason we changed that is obviously, instead of having eight passing periods on Friday, we were told that, uh, in the automatic waivers, that you can modify your schedule to reduce transitions for safety and healthy of staff. And so that was the whole intent to taking away Fast Friday was just to make it where, uh, we were not in the halls, uh, for twenty more minutes than we had to be. And we are in a crowded situation. Our junior high and high school, uh, we were in the middle of a bond issue that we had to postpone when the pandemic hit. And, uh, we share a cafeteria, gym, and many classrooms between the junior high and the high school, as well as staff. So getting everybody on the same schedule, eliminating more people in the halls than we could, was a safety issue for us. Obviously, to the letter of the law, though, we do not accomplish on the one week, a teacher may only have one sixty minutes, and that's the grievance. If you could help me go one more slide? And as I said, we were, we were acting on the automatic waivers, uh, on the Ready for Learning model. It says in the guidelines that we can modify schedules to minimize transitions due to COVID-nineteen. That's why we removed Fast Friday. Block scheduling also aligns. We worked out with our post-secondary partners. We have apprenticeships, we have internships, and we have concurrent credits, as well as all of our higher pedagogical and lab, uh, models work with the block schedule for the eighty minutes. And of course, the efficient use of, uh, resources and increased instructional time. Uh, a eight-period day puts the students in the halls for twenty to twenty-five more minutes of just passing time, and we get to have that as instructional time when it goes to the A-B block. So again, because of the statute saying shall, because our legal counsel looked at it as well as ADE, and, uh, Dr. Ivy Pfeffer helped us with all this as well, they felt like this did not address, though, uh, the issue when it came to, uh, the inadequacy of a week on that statute language of shall. So we're asking for a waiver of one year, that, in the spirit of the law, and in the fact that in an A-B block, it is a two-week cycle, that we do average two hundred minutes a week. We are not trying to, we, we love that standard. Uh, we wish, we could afford to make it even higher, but, uh, we're not trying to remove that standard, but in the spirit of the law, we have two hundred minutes going. In the letter of the law, there are weeks that, uh, a teacher only has one sixty, but the next week they have two forty. The other reason we need the waiver is the law also says forty minutes per day. So even if you say go on your way with two hundred minutes a week, it could be grieved that because we're not in a lockstep eight, nine-period cycle of forty minutes, that that is still a violation if you don't have forty minutes per day, which almost dictates secondary schedules across the state to be into eight, nine-period modes. So we need to have the waiver just because, uh, we feel like it could even be pressed, that because it's not a forty minutes a day, it would actually pull us off the entire block for all of our secondary school. Questions?
Sorry, Mr. Lookadoo.
Um, yeah, two quick questions. One, uh, do we know, other schools who have block scheduling, um, are they, that forty minutes a day, do, do they abide by that, or is it more than two hundred minutes a week, or is it, is it both? Do we know? Other schools who have block?
Can I, can I give you my research?
Sure.
I don't know if it's legit. I mean, it's legit for as far as we know. But we're aware of twenty-five schools, districts that are in block, and only three have waivers. Plan time is the kind of thing that, um, it's not, uh, monitored, but if it's grieved, it's addressed. And so, uh, to our research, there are fifty-three waivers for plan time in the state. There are- There are 25 schools in the state that have A/B block schedule, only three have waivers. So it could become an issue if people press the letter of the law, too.
I don't know if standards is aware, I'm not aware of specific examples. Dr. Pfeffer said she wasn't either. It'll take some research on our part to find that.
And then a second question, just, I know this came up at a PPC meeting, and have you asked teachers, have you kind of polled teachers, and what do they? Me, as a teacher, I would be okay with this, like personally, but I'm just wondering if you've asked teachers?
Yeah, we've had this discussion with our PPC, it was brought to us from our PPC. We explained that we were doing this out of the safety waiver, but we would check. And then when we checked, you know, no one wants to take away anybody's planning time. So I said, and our lawyer even said, the problem is the shall gives the districts no wiggle room if there's any variance. And so he said, you'd need to apply to get a waiver, or else you're going to make other choices. And obviously, we don't think we can afford the payment part, and we think it's too disruptive and unsafe to put everybody back on that eight, nine-period day. And we talked to our PPC, it came from them, and we said we'd investigate, and so that's why we're here. And most of them are, most of the teachers are okay with it, too. But again, when you have a grievance on a statute and the language is that tight, you've got to have some kind of legal assistance.
Mr. Sutton?
Ms. Woods? PPC perspective, when you talk about they're okay with it, are they okay with it because they have no other option? Or they're just willing to make it work for this year? I guess I'm just really hesitant to take away teacher planning time, as I think everybody is. And so while some teachers would be okay with it, others are not. And so I'm just trying to gauge where they're really feeling about it.
Well, you know, it varies when they come in, who they represent. And what I would tell you is, if the building principals had a vote of the majorities of theirs to either keep what we're doing or do something else to just satisfy 200 minutes a week, it'd be a majority. I mean, this was only one complaint, that's all this takes, though. And but the other issue is, that one complaint still stands if it's 40 minutes a day, which was, it says shall in the statute. And so we have no wiggle room there, and that means that we have no choices but to go eight, nine periods. And that, we don't feel like that's safe. And in our past processes of PLC with the PPC, we've determined the block schedule is our preference for higher-order thinking and teaching skills and hands-on, real-world experiences, partnerships in the community. That's why we've evolved where we're at. It's just that when we tinkered with the Fast Friday for the safety issues, it threw us into this quandary.
So, but most of the teachers have voiced their consent?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. And they're, they are trying to work out some things, like on their second period, that's an activity period. Because we've got people that are out virtually, we could double up and do that with teachers where they have two people that are watching maybe 12 kids, and one is on while one's off to get their 40 minutes. But that still doesn't solve the 40 minutes a day. I can get them to 200 minutes a week, but I'll be back here because the grievance, the statute says 40 minutes a day.
One moment. Thank you, thank you for that information. Mr. Key, do you want to add something?
Ms. Woods, you know, I can't speak directly, I can speak to the contact or communication that's come to me. I did have a teacher who was concerned and voiced opposition. In my response, I said, you know, this is a board decision. Do you want me to send this, your concern, your opposition to the board? She said, yes, please. I think it might have been a day or two days later, I got another email from her, and she said, "The PPC has talked about this, and we're, I no longer want you to send that opposition to the board." That they felt like it had been resolved. That's the only communication that I had. I don't know if we got anything else. I'm looking for Gina, but I don't think we received anything else. And that was just the one interaction that I had with the teacher from Batesville, so.
And I didn't say anything, I was just kind of curious. I mean, obviously, this is just specific to Batesville, so other districts might be different. But I was just curious, for your specific district, how people were feeling about it. Because I know teachers, a lot of times, don't feel like they get 40 minutes a day, but they might get their collective 200 a week, and that's always been working this whole time, so, thank you.
We're willing, and, you know, we feel horrible for everyone's plight and taking plan time. We would not do that, but this was a safety issue and safety recommendations made. And we could work it out with people, but that 40 minutes a day could stand if people still want to hold us to the letter of the law. And that's why we feel like the waiver is important, at least to get us through this year.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Woods. Dr. Moore? Ms. Newton? Ms. Mayor Claire Hyatt?
Ms. Hyatt, the waiver is, he's saying that he can get the 200 minutes. Would the law say that he has to have the 40 minutes a day also? Would the 200 minutes meet the requirements of the law?
Let me get it pulled back up on my tiny computer. So what the law says is that the planning time must be in increments of no less than 40 minutes, and that has to be during the student instructional day, unless a teacher submits a written request or a written statement that says they can have it outside of the instructional day. It doesn't read, "The planning time shall be in increments of no less than 40 minutes every day." It doesn't say that. It says increments of no less than 40 minutes during the instructional day. So I know that in conversations that we've had with districts, their interpretation of that has been 40 minutes per day. The statute itself does not have that per-day language in it. It just says, "The planning time shall be in increments of no less than 40 minutes during the student instructional day, unless a teacher agrees to have it outside of the instructional day."
So if he were, if the district was to meet the 200 minutes, then that would be meeting the law?
Provided that they were providing the planning time in increments of no less than 40 minutes. So if they were doing like 20 minutes one day, or 20 minutes in the morning and 20 minutes in the afternoon, I don't think that would meet the law, because it's not an increment of 40 minutes.
Right.
But if they were doing 80 minutes one day, and then no planning time the next day, and then 80 minutes another day, and meeting the 200 minutes, I believe that would meet it. But it's my understanding that there were going to be some weeks, depending on which the block schedule fell on, that they wouldn't necessarily get the 200 minutes in the week. And they would make it up the next week, so on average throughout the year, they would have 200 minutes, but it wouldn't be per week, which is what's in the law.
Dr. Hester, you said that you thought you could meet the 200 minutes. Explain to me how your thinking is on the 200 minutes.
When we have, it's called seminar or activity time for secondary. It's where we have academic tutoring, college and career strategies, test-taking strategies. Our numbers are lower because of our remote and virtual onsite. And so maybe we have eight kids in a class instead of 16, where we can combine the two classes with two teachers, and have one teacher be on one day, one teacher off, and they could gain their time that way. And our principals are willing to work that out. But our legal counsel says that districts have lost on the daily 40 minutes before an appeals.
Okay, so the extra time would be at 40-minute, at least a 40-minute time?
Yeah, on the week, that it's only 160. They're getting 240, they'll still get 240, and we can adjust on the 160 to 200. And that'll get us there, but it still doesn't conquer the daily thing. And we think we still have an issue with some daily language.
The part that bothers me on the planning time, I can't imagine, you know, teaching and having two planning periods a week. I mean, even if it's 80 minutes, you know, if a teacher puts a whole lot more than 80 minutes a day in planning, if she's doing a good job. And so I can't imagine just having two of those a week. And then another thing that concerns me is that this was a grievance, apparently, of one staff member. There are probably more staff members that are hesitant to speak up, that are feeling the same pressure. And we know that this year is a year full of pressure for teachers of all sorts. And so to take away planning time is a huge concern for me, especially if you're saying that there is a way that you can meet the 200 minutes a week, then I think that that's probably what I would say that a teacher needs this year is planning time, time to make sure, I don't know if our teachers are trying to do both virtual and onsite, or-
Yeah, again, we can find ways to do it. It's the grievance of the daily that we're going to face. We can do it for 200 in the week. If they press it the daily, that's what we're going to be suspecting.
So, you know, I would be hesitant approving the reducing of the planning time as the waiver has been asked for. That's just my opinion.
Thank you, Ms. Newton. Ms. McFetrick, do you have any questions? Okay. If there are no more questions or comments or discussion, then I'll wait for a motion.
That we could, we now have the power to modify a waiver that this district no longer has to?
You have the authority to deny and grant in part. So while you can't really add something to it, you could say we will grant part of the request.
But the waiver that's being asked for is to waive both the 200 and the 40 minutes a day, both?
So it's in the same law? So I think, and I don't have their waiver, which I don't even have to worry about. I think that it just asked for the law, and to a superintendent's point, I think probably on the per-day, the equal staff could go back and look at the previous versions of the statute and see if that language was to be in there, or what the guidance around that has been, and kind of clear that up. Because I know that there are districts that read it as 40 minutes per day, even though that per-day language is not explicitly in the statute. So I think we can go back and kind of sure that up between everyone. So they have asked for the whole statute, which would include the 40-minute section and the 20-minute section.
So you're saying we wouldn't even need to grant a waiver for the 40 minutes a day?
So the way that the statute reads is it says, you have to provide a planning time, the 200 minutes each week, in increments of no less than 40 minutes during the student instructional. It doesn't say in no less than 40 minutes per day. No, we're in the statute, it doesn't say planning time must be every day. It says, the planning time has to be 200 minutes per week, and it has to be in increments of no less than 40 minutes, and it has to be during the student instructional. Meaning you can't have planning time after students are already on the line at this point.
So sorry, Dan. So that per-day language is not explicitly in the statute. But I do think that there are lots of districts, and as the superintendent said, district council, that are reading that to be 40 minutes per day. I don't know that the division has ever put out guidance on that. I haven't researched it enough to know that. So I would say if there's any type of misunderstanding about whether it's 40 minutes per day or not, we should err on the side of safety there, that would be my opinion. Of course, Lori, if you disagree with me, please jump in. And I do think also the piece about the 200 minutes per week, even if they're going to be making it up and having more or whatever, if there are going to be weeks where maybe they get 190 minutes as opposed to 200 minutes, or 199 minutes as opposed to 200 minutes, they would need that piece of the waiver.
Could the waiver be modified for what the board considers is that if we satisfy 200 minutes per week, that that waiver would be, could that be what the waiver says? That if we satisfy 200 minutes a week, that we have a waiver for a year for that?
So as a board, you can place some qualifiers on the waiver. That's always been a power, because it's whatever is agreed to in the hearing. So if the school district says, "We agree to have 200 minutes per week for every teacher, in return of a 40-minute increments," that's absolutely possible.
Do we have any discussion? Sir, okay, so we're ready for a motion.
I was going to comment, Rita, I was looking up the original law, and they, it's never said per day in the original.
So, you know, I'm still unclear if we would need to do the 40 minutes a day, but if we said that the waiver would, if the district ensures that every teacher has 200 minutes a week, then we're okay with what they do? And so however, Ms. Claire, Mayor Claire, you said the motion, and that's what I want to say.
So you can word it, you know, move to approve with the understanding that the district will provide 200 minutes of planning time per week.
Okay. The district has agreed that you would be willing to do that, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. We can work that out, we can work that one out. And that's, the principals are working with staff and glad to do that. No one, I mean, we are, we're all so empathetic, we hate that this even happens, but we were put between the choice between safety and the health versus this time. And we, in the spirit of the law, it was 200 minutes on a two-week block cycle. So in the spirit of the law, we were fine, but then the letter, and this would help solve that. So thank you for considering.
So we have a motion by Ms. Newton, seconded by Ms. Chambers. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes. So 200 minutes per week for each teacher, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, next we have consideration of the request for a waiver to implement the Arkansas Ready for Learning Model, Ms. Courtney Salas-Ford.
Good morning again, Courtney Salas-Ford for the department. There's been lots of talk about waivers this morning, and this actually ties back to the bulk group of waivers that you all granted in June to every school district and charter school in the state to implement the Ready for Learning Model. As you'll see there in the description, we actually did waive the law that requires 40 minutes of recess daily for students attending virtually, that that would not have to be waived. At the time, there were not corresponding rules, but since then, rules have been updated. And so just to fully effectuate the waiver, we need to now waive that section of the rules so that districts are not being held to the rules, even though the law was previously waived. And so that's what we are asking for today, is waiver of sections 7.11 and 7.12 of the rules as they relate to the requirement for 40 minutes daily of recess.
Do we have any questions? Dr. Moore?
I do, so this is just for virtual students?
Yes, it is made clear in the application that all the school districts submitted back in June that this only, these waivers only apply to students who are attending remotely or virtually, not to any student that's onsite.
Okay, and this is, oh, this is, I know, I mean, I know a lot of teachers are suggesting activities and different things for students while at home.
Yes.
This is making, this is saying that they don't have to have a PE teacher for 40 minutes of their day, is that correct?
Well, it's not even tied to PE, because if it's a PE course, then they still have to meet those requirements. But for, yeah, this is strictly just for recess. And yes, I know many school districts are recommending different activities for students at home and virtually, but because it would be very difficult for the school districts to ensure that students at home are at recess for 40 minutes a day, this is what relieves them of that obligation.
But we expect that districts are still giving students breaks during the day? You know, they're not just sitting in front of the computer for six hours at a time?
Oh, yeah, no, absolutely, yes.
Okay, is there any way to prevent students from having to be at the screen for seven hours at a time, you know? Other than common sense, but-
Deb and Tracy might have left. So school districts, you know, had to submit their Ready for Learning plans, laying out how they were addressing scheduling and different things. Students who are onsite have to be provided a lunch period, and so I'm not aware of any instruction that would be going on, but I honestly, I don't know. That's something we can check into and get more information for you.
They're still, I mean, common sense would prevail, that they're still getting lunch periods and that sort of thing, so there's still breaks?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions or comments? With that in mind, ready for a motion. Motion to approve by Ms. McFetrich. Seconded by Mr. Sutton. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Salas Ford. Okay, well, that concludes our first action agenda for the morning. Is there any opposition to us breaking and then coming back at 12:30 instead of noon? Is there any issue with that for reports? Okay. Then we'll break for lunch, and we'll be back here at 12:30.
Going to get started and get back on to our agenda, on the afternoon action agenda. And next is reports. Do we have any reports from our liaisons or any board members? Yes, it's all right. Okay, we don't have any reports. All right. Then, Madam Chair.
May I make one comment? Mm-hmm. It's not a report so much as a solicitation, I guess. I'm still, I'm in my last year of service on the Finance Committee for NASB. And I think they have two, maybe three openings on that committee. And are interested in if there are any names that we would like to put forward. It's a very interesting committee to serve on. It's a very definite view into where money comes from and how it's spent and what our priorities are. So if anyone's interested in learning more, I'd be happy to make contacts for them.
Thank you, Ms. Chambers. Thank you for bringing that up. Anyone else? Okay, then we'll hear from Mr. Lukadu, our Artist of the Year.
Okay, so just a quick update for this month. Felt like my learning theme and the theme of what I was seeing was teacher leadership. I felt like, just for this month, and the activities that I was participating in and just getting to see, that was just kind of the, what kept coming up and coming back to. And so, one of the things we did was our Teacher of the Year finalist observations and interviews. And so, we had four finalists, and Tia Bricky from Stuttgart, Susan Henderson from Conway, both library media specialists, which we kind of talked about a little bit earlier. And it was really neat to see what they're doing in that role. It's not only literacy as we think about reading, but literacy with technology and incorporating so many things, from coding and robotics to things with, you know, videos and green screen technology, as well as what they're doing with the reading piece. And so, how useful and powerful that position can really be, it was just neat to see that. And then, we also went to Little Rock and Fort Smith and saw more of kind of the STEM side of things with Amber Harbin and Susannah Post. And so, again, just really refreshing to see teachers, we hear so many of the challenges of this year, and it's important to acknowledge those and to know what's happening. But it's also refreshing to see the good work and what's happening with that. So, these were some examples of that. And then, I also had the chance to go to the Teacher Leadership Institute at the Rockefeller Institute at Petagene, which is just a fantastic thing put on by Arkansas Leadership Academy. And I thought I had a picture in the middle, but apparently not. But yeah, it was well done, even in COVID times, as far as social distancing and just the precautions that they did. They did an amazing job of putting this on and being able to bring people together in a safe manner. They did that very well. You know, one of the things I kept hearing about from teachers there was how wonderful it was, and I think Ms. Newton, we may have talked about this last time, to be treated as a professional, like truly above and beyond. Because the way they do this, I mean, you have your own room, pre-COVID, but also now, you have the food and the way you're treated. It's just, it really uplifts teachers, and I think they do that in such a great way. That's why I put a picture of food. Because it was fantastic. I mean, it was just wonderful. I don't even know what that was, but it was some kind of cheesecake goodness. But it was, like, that seems like such a small thing, but it's not. You know, it's just, it means a lot. It meant a lot to everyone there. And there was a lot of learning going on. It was long days. You start at eight in the morning, and you're going till eight at night. And, you know, but, but it's worth it, because you know that you're valued in that. And the idea of human capital and social capital came up there, and I thought that was really good. And as we think about the future coming out of the pandemic, how we can invest in both of these things, the human capital side of, I think we do that a lot. That's our focus, of how are we investing in the skills and knowledge of the person? But also, how are we leveraging the social side of this and bringing the ideas together? And again, that teacher leadership piece, I think their voice really matters. And this quote, that was really good. "We are all going through a significant period of evolution, but there's an incredible opportunity. And my greatest hope is that we don't reach for normal, that we reach for better." And as we come out of this, whatever that looks like, that the goal is not, let's go back to the way things were. That we truly look to leverage this crisis challenge, whatever you want to call it, that we don't just go through it to have gotten through it, but that we really grow through it and reach for better. So, just, those are my thoughts. And the idea, the theme of teacher leadership and bringing their voice into that as we move forward. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. That was a great report. I love that, that we come out better, not normal. That's great. I'm taking that with me. Next on the agenda, we have the Commissioner's report. Secretary King.
All right, so we have a number of topics that we want to cover today. And the first is Susan Jobe is going to come and talk, give you an update on the Guide for Life. As you all know, not only is this time stressful and trying for teachers, educators, also pretty trying for the kids as well. So, you know, when we launched Guide for Life, you know, we did not, had no idea what we were facing in the future with this pandemic. But I think the timing of it was well timed. And Susan is going to give you an update on the work that she's been doing, leading that effort, and the work of the groups around the state.
Good afternoon. I'm so excited to be here with you today. Honored to be able to share with you some of the work that we've been doing around Guide for Life. The Guide for Life Personal Competency Standards were developed by school counselors, mental and behavioral health specialists, and classroom educators using research and best practices from the CASL framework. And if you could go on, go to the second slide, or do I have control of that? Before I came to the department, I myself was not familiar with the vision of the Department of Education. And I wish I would have been when I was in the classroom, because just the thought of leading the nation in student-focused education, I think if you've been an educator and spent time with kids in a classroom, that's what you do every day. And so, to be able to really understand what your role is in that transformation, I think would be really inspiring to think about. But the principles in the Guide for Life do support student-focused education. And so, proficiency in these skills are going to support our students to be successful at school, at home, on the job, and in the community. If you can go to the next slide, please. Some of you, I believe, are new to the board since we launched Guide for Life. And we're going to go through a timeline in just a little bit. But I wanted to give you just a brief overview of the principles that are supported in the Guide for Life. The first would be growth. Which really encompasses self-management. And I looked at these principles when I first came on board last summer. One way, and then after COVID, the way that I view them has changed a little bit. But on growth, I think sometimes as a teacher, your mind might automatically go to things like growth mindset. But when I look at growth now, I look at the self-management piece and how our students, with the way things have been since March, have had to really learn to be students again in new ways. And so, those self-management skills, regulating emotions and feelings and behaviors in different situations, is really critical. We want our kids to be able to practice mindfulness and perseverance. Understanding is just the self-awareness piece. And this is where I like to talk about growth mindset, knowing your strengths and weaknesses. Thank you very much. Knowing your strengths and weaknesses. Being curious and inquisitive and growth-minded. Interaction, which the relationship-building piece is, to me, the most important thing you do as an educator. Your students really need to know that you care about them and you're invested in them. Really, it might sound cliche, but people don't care how much you know until they know how much you care. And so, for our kids to be able to succeed and to bloom academically, we've got to meet these critical fundamental needs first. And that includes just building strong relationships. And so, since COVID and virtual learning, that has become probably more challenging for teachers to be able to build those relationships in those virtual environments. But what I'm seeing every day is teachers going above and beyond to do just that. Decisions, making responsible choices. And not just making a decision and a choice, but thinking about how every choice matters and how your choices never just impact you, how they impact other people. And so, teaching our students to put their best self forward and to think through those consequences as they're making decisions. And then, the last part of our acronym is empathy, which to me is the social awareness, seeing other perspectives and being aware of others, appreciating diversity. And really, to me, it's the most critical skills, but it's also probably the most difficult skill to transfer. And so, especially in the way that, you know, things, the way that they are in the world today, just being able to be empathetic and socially aware and appreciative of other people's perspectives, even if you can't understand maybe where they're coming from, or even if you don't agree. I'm not sure if you're familiar with this graphic, but it's called "The Lenses of Learning," and I love it. We're committed to students exhibiting evidence of learning through three lenses of application that moves students towards competency in multiple disciplines. And so, in order for our kids to graduate and be college and career-ready, they need to be actively literate, critical thinkers who are community-engaged. The Lenses of Learning, excuse me, outline how students exhibit evidence of their learning and how teachers provide opportunities for students to demonstrate their learning. The Lenses of Learning are about empowering students for success. And the Guide for Life competencies are at the core for this Arkansas vision for teaching and learning. So, as a former English teacher, I wanted my students to be able to read, decode, comprehend text. But how does that translate for them in their post-secondary lives? We want them to be able to read and understand policies and laws and how they apply to them, to make informed health choices, and to be creative problem solvers in their community and to contribute in positive ways. So, I love the quote at the bottom that says, "Teaching is not just about serving your students, it's about serving the society that they're going to impact." So, a timeline of some things that we've been doing with Guide for Life. In July 2019, Guide was launched at the ADE Summit. In October of 2019, the Guide for Life blog and podcasts were launched as a resource for educators. In April of 2020, with the statewide guiding coalition, we provided social-emotional learning resources developed for the state academic playbook. And in June of 2020, we held summer professional development sessions where over 300 educators took part in weekly virtual professional development sessions. In July of 2020, teams of educators worked virtually to develop 20 units and over 200 lessons around the personal competency standards in the Guide for Life. And in August of 2020, Arkansas was one of nine states in the country recognized in the CASL CSI newsletter for its efforts in providing social-emotional resources for teachers and students throughout the academic playbook and the development of the Guide for Life curriculum. So, in the future, we're looking to see how we can connect Guide for Life more closely to the student's success plans and other things. And so, that brings us to today, where I'm really excited to share the Guide for Life curriculum with you. This is just a snapshot of what was involved in the process. We had over 96 educators in 74 schools from 44 districts across the state of Arkansas. They worked virtually over two-day periods of time to develop lessons- They worked virtually over two-day periods of time to develop lessons based around the personal competency standards in the Guide for Life. And it was a priority for me personally to include our special populations like ALE, ESOL, GT, and Special Education on the front end of the development in order to ensure that the needs of all learners were addressed. We talk a lot about collaboration here at DESI. I'm sorry, I'm out of breath. But I really feel like this is a beautiful example of the collaboration that happens across units in learning services especially. There was not a unit, I believe, maybe homeschool, that, and we should fix that next time, that was not involved in this process in some kind of way, whether it was bringing the teacher teams together, connecting me with educators. I never could have done this by myself, the backend editing process. It was just really amazing. So, we now have a website, and that's just a screenshot of it, where educators can go and access these units and lessons. They're written for Arkansas educators, by Arkansas educators, and we're going to release a webinar just informing them how they can access and utilize them in different ways in their classrooms. The lessons can be taught as complete units, individual lessons, or as support and enrichment to instruction that's already taking place in their classroom. Some features of the Guide for Life Lesson Plan Template. They can be delivered through both virtual and face-to-face instruction. There are pre- and post-assessments. We really try to think about best practices for instruction. The four big questions in professional learning communities, what do we expect our students to learn? How will we know that they're learning? How will we respond when they don't learn? And how will we respond if they already know it? The lessons include diversified instruction to meet the needs of all learners. There's also a section I'm very proud of on educator resilience and self-care. And I just want to thank you for just what I see in the work that you guys are doing and your advocacy for teachers. It's really, it's important and it's appreciated. And then a teacher reflection piece, where teachers can look back at what's going on in the classroom and their interactions with students and see, how can I improve and make it better? Some of the questions, and this is just a sample of questions on the reflection to ask with students, if we do this again, what can I do differently to help you learn more? Classroom culture, are the relationships that I have with my students helping or hindering their ability to learn? Curriculum and instruction on assessment and grading practices, do my assessments really reflect learning or merely task completion and memorization skills? Collaboration and professional learning communities, do my actions as a teacher show that my belief, that I believe that all students can learn at high levels? And then just maintaining a healthy mental outlook, what new ideas have I tried in the classroom lately to keep myself energized about teaching? I wanted to show you a sample of just one lesson that was created. This is the Decisions Team for Grades K-2, and this is their virtual Lesson 1. You have the pieces from the actual Guide for Life there. And then, I can't access this, but on this screen here, these are very interactive. So, if a teacher was presenting this with her classes face-to-face, she can click on the pre-test board and print out the printable test. It's all linked right within the presentation. If they're doing it virtually, or if she wanted to pull it up on a smartboard, she could actually do that as well. They made it current and fun. They used the Bitmoji Classroom. Each one of these Bitmojis represents somebody that served on this Decisions K-2 team, and I just thought it was really cute and fun, and I knew that the kids would like it. So, we have also really been intentional to incorporate things that we know are important that connect with other initiatives like RISE. So vocabulary is a big part of this Guide for Life curriculum. So, for instance, decisions, that's a choice that earns a consequence, whether it's positive or negative, and then they talk about the scenarios that they see. In this slide, they're going to have a read aloud. If they click on the movie screen, the story actually pops up. We were able to use Arkansas Digital Sandbox to make sure that there were no pop-ups or ads or anything inappropriate that could hinder anything in the classroom, and it wouldn't be appropriate for kids. So, that was a really nice tool to be able to have. And then, the question mark, if you click on that, that is a digital sort that you could do live with your kids or online. And I'll just flip through, but you can see how they're having those conversations and building those vocabularies about making good decisions. Within the Lesson Plan Templates, teachers are given an idea of the allotted time that the lesson and the activities will take so that they can, it just allows for easier planning, and they'll know how easily that's going to fit in within the scope of their classroom schedules. So, we tried to think of everything. This right here would be an example of something they could print off and the kids could actually do with pencil and paper, or if the interactive version is a drag-and-drop, so the kids could do that. And then, we do have a video for Guide for Life, and we don't have to show it, but I know that some of you may not have seen it, so I'll just let y'all make that call, whether you'd like to watch it or not. And it came out at the beginning of Guide for Life. I don't know. I'm sorry? That's right, she is in it. You'll have access to this presentation, and please go and watch it if you haven't seen it. But anyway, I'm super proud of this. I'm really proud of, proud for the teachers that gave, so willingly gave of their time. And what that said to me is that there's a need for social-emotional learning, there is a need for it to be a priority, and they know that their students need support in these skills. And so, they came together willingly and just produced something really amazing and pretty innovative. So, thank you for your time.
So, my chair, obviously, an effort like this doesn't just happen. And so, when we were trying to identify the right person to lead this, this work, and found Susan, and identified her, brought her on board, and she's never going to brag on herself, but I, so I'll do it. She's led this work, she's coordinated, she's done all this. So, everything that you see there, the work of the teachers and getting them on board, it was very collaborative, but she made it happen. And I just want to tell you all how much I appreciate the work that she puts into this. It's fantastic. I mean, I'd stack this up against any state's effort. And I just want to say that, Susan, great job.
Great job. Thank you for your work.
Don't go away, they may have questions. I just kind of jumped in there so I could brag on you.
Ms. James? I didn't have a question, but I did have an appreciation to Susan and to Stacy. All kidding aside, I felt so lucky to get to see early on what you were putting together. And having a chance to see adults, in many cases, in my previous work-life, that didn't have the opportunity to have these things shared and reinforced and lived and experienced as you are creating in the classroom, this is going to make a difference for our society and makes, it makes better, healthier, happier humans. And I just, you can't say enough about that, that everything, all the other things that are being taught in the classroom is so important, but I would put this at the top of the list. So, thank you so much.
And thank you, Mrs. Smith, because this was her original idea. I just ran with it. We had conversations. Yeah, it was, it was good. So, I'm proud of it, and I'm excited to get to share it with teachers in the state. And I think that these teachers are proud of their work. And another thing I want to say is that I feel like it was a real bridge builder between DESI and the teachers at a very important time. And the feedback that I got from them, being a part of this process, was just very rewarding. Many, many of them said, please, if we continue to add to this body of work, I want to be a part of it. And so, I think that says a lot, and I think it was just really important timing for us and for them.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a nice day.
All right. So, our next item is updates. This is something that, and Dr. Pfeffer's going to present this, but some of you that have been on the board a long time, you may remember when we did this as a routine. We gave you, on Friday, Report Day, we would give you updates on some of the work that divisions are doing. And many of the topics and things that we've had to deal with over the last couple of years really interrupted that flow, and we want to try to get back to giving you those regular updates. So, there are a lot of exciting things going on in the various divisions, and Dr. Pfeffer's going to present some of those today.
So, thank you. And this is just going to be some, some highlights of what's gone on just most recently. I actually contacted a couple of the Assistant Commissioners and said, okay, I'm going to pull a couple of these slides because these are even bigger deals that I want to make sure we come back and present to the board where they'll have an opportunity to even look at this in advance and be ready to ask questions. So, the way we would envision this is, you know, every first, every month, we have a First Friday celebration and meeting, and the different divisions put together a presentation that recognizes team members for accomplishments, but also pull out some of the work that has been, been going on, and especially when we are starting to meet our milestones and goals according to our strategic plan. So, we decided the best way to keep you updated was to pull from those First Friday presentations and to try to give you a taste every month of some of the things that are going on, especially as we're meeting those goals. So, the idea will be to have this posted in advance so that you have time to look through it. And I won't get up here and present it every month, but you'll have the opportunity then to say, oh, hey, I want Ms. Sarah Senior to talk a little bit more about the licensure, or I want Dr. Kramer's to really fill us in on what's going on with CTE. So, since we didn't get all of that in place today, I'm just going to talk you through these, and if you do have some questions, I know everybody is around and they can come in and update you a little bit more. But one of the things we want to talk about, we've got a couple of really neat grant opportunities that are going on. And this one is one we just heard about last, last week, I believe. And so, we did get a new five-year State Personnel Development Grant, which we call SPDIG. And it is in the amount of $6.2 million, and they said it's actually about $300,000 more than what we asked for. So, I think, you know, next time, you know, we'll even dream bigger there. So, but the difference with this is that this time, this grant really is a collaboration of multiple divisions within the agency. So, it's not only involving Special Education, it's involving educator effectiveness, it's involving our current, I'm trying to think of the, do what? Office of Innovation in Education. And so, the idea is to take work that had already been started around high-leverage practices and inclusive practices around the Special Education work, but to roll that into the whole concept of revamped professional learning, which is getting away from just traditional sit-and-get PD hours. So, in this larger concept of professional learning, building in micro-credentials so that teachers are actually demonstrating that they're learning and putting into practice these just really good everyday teaching techniques, how you plan to meet the needs of all students, but then even bringing in another piece with Special Education licensure so that teachers who embark on this type of professional learning can actually earn micro-credentials that could lead to possibly the addition of Special Education, either in a, in a resource setting or possibly a full K-12 Special Education license. And we'll be able to bring higher ed into the conversation because this could either be done through a pathway that you all approve, or it could also be part of a higher education pathway. So, it's something that'll continue over the next five years, but we see it as a way to just promote the kinds of inclusive practices which are, which go back to really good teaching, it's good for all kids, but it also creates an opportunity for teachers to add value to their license. And ultimately, we really want districts to look at, hey, now that I have these people who can do all of these things and do them so well, how do I then position them into scenarios where I can pay them more money? If I'm not having to hire an additional person, 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 and I have, you know, a team of, let's just say you have a team of middle-school teachers who could not only teach in a regular classroom, but also have their special education and were really good with these practices to meet the needs of all students, you could really do some, some awesome things with your, with your staffing and pay structure. So, this is one we're going to be really excited about, and we're going to want to talk about a lot. This is also a grant that has been on my mind because I've been signing a whole lot of grant applications, but I have taken the time to really read these. And Stacy could talk about this a whole lot more, Tiffany could talk about it a whole lot more. But this is the, the grant that we received, the federal grant, and remind me how much...
$38 million.
Yep. So, the 38 million over five years, and the 95% of that goes to schools. And so, they're writing grant applications, and I've seen everything from the purchasing of decodable texts, purchase of other materials and resources, getting the professional development for all teachers, even high school teachers, really good PD in the science of reading, building classroom libraries, engaging parents in learning about what, you know, how are we teaching reading to students? So, so a lot of different ways that districts are applying for these funds. And so, and so far, we've awarded over 8 million and probably more since this slide was created because I signed another bunch last week. You know, we don't always get to talk to you all about the Office of Coordinated Support and Service, and as you know, Stacy has taken on the leadership for that. But just to give you just a little flavor of the coordination of that, the office and the staff that is actually designated to that office, and how they integrate with our team here at the Division of Elementary and Secondary Education. So, when you look at that list of names, I would say that a lot of people here really wouldn't be able to tell you who is technically a DESI employee and who's an employee of OCSS. And they've been working together on a lot of projects. I know as school got started a few weeks ago, we had several people that were just going onsite, right and left, you know, if there was a problem and one of our team members needed to be there. They were. Brent Miller actually helped to plant Mums, is that right? At, at Lee County, right? Early on. And so, you know, you just, it's those little things that you do, you know, just to make sure that school is a great place for, for, not just for learning, but also for that culture. And we know that when school looks like a happy place, it looks like it's well taken care of, that shapes our perceptions of that. This is a picture of the ADH Call Center, and Stacy had included this at our First Friday, and I thought, you know, this is really important to, to share with you all. I'm trying to think, do you know, Stacy, how many different people we've had now staffing Yeah. So, I remember on March 12th, and I know we got to hurry because you're going to have to go, so I'm going to hurry through all this, but I remember on March 12th, we got our first, you all were here at a board meeting, and we got the first call from the Department of Health that we had had student cases of COVID-19. You may not need to tell the story. But I remember that day, that was the first day that Secretary Key had really asked me to get involved and to be the liaison with the Department of Health. And we knew we were setting up a call center. I had no idea what it was going to look like. But I turned to Sheila Whitlow, so there's Sheila right there in the front taking the selfie, and I said, you know, Sheila, I've talked to Mike Hernandez, and can you help me with the Department of Health and help me figure out how to set up this call center and what is it going to look like? So, we went that very first day, and we're in the Emergency Operations Center with all the other people at the Department of Health. I remember she was there, Dawn Caminar was there, and phones started ringing, and we just, we didn't have a system. We just started answering the phones and jotting down notes. And the first call I took was actually from Rob McGill, who is the Charter School Director at Maumell, and he was calling the Health Department to tell them that he had just heard that his school needed to close, and he hadn't gotten a phone call. And that was also my job that first day, I was supposed to call the Charter School Directors and tell them they were going to need to close, and we accidentally did not get Rob. So, when he called to tell on me, I was the one answering the phone at the call center. he called to tell on me, I was the one answering the phone at the call center. So, I still think that's a funny story. Long story short, that call center evolved from just three or four people staffing it back in early March to, you know, probably at one time we had 15 people there every day. We had people from the Department of, from preschool, Department of, Division of Higher Ed, DHS, and our team there. And just over time, it has evolved into a well-oiled machine. They were taking 200 calls a day for a while and working directly with district points of contact. So, that has been a really good partnership. And I think that's a benefit of transformation. We continue to learn, but that would have never happened. We wouldn't have been able to cut through all the layers had we not had the ability for Secretary Key to reach directly out to the other secretaries to say, hey, we need to make this happen. And so, we've already talked about Guide for Life. I'm going to spend a second on this and with educator effectiveness. And this is probably something that Joel will be able to update more on because he has been working directly with educator effectiveness to revamp our teacher excellence support system to align with what teachers need right now in the time of COVID where so much virtual learning is taking place. And, you know, while we know not every teacher is actually maybe teaching virtually part of the day or all day, every teacher is having to embed technology and incorporate technology and has to be ready if they are subject to a quarantine, if some of their kids, if all their kids are subject to quarantine. And, you know, it would be easy to just say, look, we just need to stay out of teachers' classrooms, leave them alone and let them teach right now. They've got enough on their plates. But, if we do that, we're missing the opportunity to support teachers. And that's what TESS should continue to be about. It should continue to be about principals, teacher partners being able to help do peer observations and to help support each other, whether they're teaching face-to-face, whether they're teaching remotely, or a combination thereof. It may be that teachers don't have the, the types of resources they need. We talked to a district yesterday where they're struggling because their content is not as interactive as what they thought it would be. And so, they're having to, to spend more time trying to get materials to and from students. It's a learning process. And with anybody who's going through a learning process, they need that support. So, Charlotte Danielson actually has put out a, a change to her framework for teaching where she's highlighting the, the components that really lend themselves to observation in a virtual environment. And I think the very first one she talked about was getting to know your students, right? And that's what Susan talked about just a minute ago. Building the relationships. The, the respect and rapport still has to be there because it doesn't matter where you're teaching students. If you don't, if they don't feel like you care about them, if you don't have a relationship with them, they're not going to learn. So, I think this is going to be a welcome thing for all educators, including principals, to feel like, look, these are the things we really need to focus on this year and these are the things that are essential. If we can do these well, we're going to be able to continue teaching and learning. In our Office of Information Technology, Arregent and his team continue to improve our systems. They continue to add components. And in a couple of weeks, once we have our Certified Cycle II data, that information is going to be readily available on Insights. And so, you know, I, I mentioned earlier that I'd be happy to go through and kind of give you all an overview. We'll be able to actually send you a link and you'll be able to start looking at things before our next meeting. And so, any information we share, you'll probably already be able to send us questions in advance. But, it's going to talk, you'll be able to see everything from enrollment information, trend data, data around demographics of students. So, I know you'll be pleased with that. In Public School Accountability, we've celebrated some of their milestones. Last Friday, they had 100% Day. So, some of those important things right now are having all of our statements of assurances signed by student, or superintendents and uploaded in our online system. And all of the district's support plans have been submitted. There are a few that are still getting some just minor feedback, just, you know, solidifying where there are a few questions remaining. But, we feel good about that. We have a lot of districts that are updating their support plans based on changes that they're making. In Research and Technology, October is Cyber Aware Month. And so, you'll be able to go through this presentation and see things that are going on there. Dawn and Gina have worked closely on all of the things that have been made available to school districts around technology, whether it's hotspots. And this was a, a great addition to have additional hotspots that are going to be available through T-Mobile. These will be targeted towards our economically disadvantaged students and going to really make a difference. They have some other podcasts that they've made available. And you can see that the podcasts that R&amp;T helped to promote are podcasts that go into things that, that happen in other divisions. So, the Arkansas Aware, that's another grant that we have in Learning Services around health supports. You can see the Guide for Life. SMAC Talk, I think, is mentioned a little bit later. SMAC Talk is all about supporting technology awareness. And there, there's a different episode every month that comes out. This is a really great training option that's being made available to Arkansas teachers. And you can look more about that. And the Data Quest and SMAC Talk info are there at those links. So, these were some things that he highlighted. And we were really pulling out all the stops because of it being October Cyber Awareness Month. Transportation and Facilities, that, they, they've made a lot of adjustments, worked closely with schools. They've had to redesign everything from face-to-face training, making it virtual, to, you know, really answering questions, staying connected with school districts as they've navigated through changes with how they get students to school. But, one of the, the things that we're really proud of is the, the collaboration efforts that Mr. Kane's team has made with others. So, you can see that our Office of Information Technology has helped them learning, digital content, and resources that provided the work-based learning opportunities. We now feel like we've got a much stronger blended approach for our students and teachers in our CTE courses. So, that's been positive. And we did use our State Set Aside Cares Act to not only support our traditional K-12, but for our CTE classes. So, a pretty good challenge to them as well. So, that's just kind of a high level of some of the stuff that has gone on the last couple of months. And next time, you'll be able to look at it in advance and be able to ask some questions and we can update you on anything you need. So.
Can you tell us a little bit about Engage Arkansas?
Yes. Didn't put that on here. So, Engage Arkansas is the, it's, it's a collaborative effort between us, our Education Renewal Zones, and Graduation Alliance. And it's really a short-term and long-term strategy to help, help bring students back to the classroom or to engage them with, with the school. And it takes the burden off of the school necessarily from having to, to try to go and, and find where students are now. They did do that in the first 30 days and we saw some success with giving districts more time before they had to drop students. But, the way this will work, we'll have the ERZs working with us, working with school districts to really examine data in their area. So, or in their region. What, which schools really have seen enrollment declines or which schools are reporting concerns about student engagement. I got an email from a superintendent a while ago who was talking about the first nine weeks. They have a system that helps track how many assignments are turned in or not turned in. And he said there were 14,000 assignments that didn't get turned in this nine weeks. And they have a lot of students who have failing grades right now. So, for them, it's not about enrollment concerns, it's about the engagement. So, the ERZ will be able to, to look at that. Will be able then to help determine which schools need the support, that immediate support that Graduation Alliance can provide. And some of that might be outreach counselors to help make sure the community knows and understands all of the educational options within a school district. And maybe some academic coaches. So, in the case I just described, it may be that there are students at this school that need somebody to reach out and, and help work through some of the academic challenges students are facing. It could also be telehealth, mental health services, or, you know, just connections to help answer questions or concerns about COVID. So, but, but for the longer term, Graduation Alliance is also going to provide the technical assistance to the ERZs so that they can understand how to implement some of these strategies so that, you know, next year, the year after, we can continue to always have more of a regional approach to, to really understand what data do we need to look at? What are some of the strategies that really work? What are resources we have within our community right now that already exists that we can tap into to, to really handle both in attendance and an engagement type solution?
Just add, let me add to that just a little bit. You know, the graduation rate for the, the class of 25 and the class of 26 is being impacted right now. And, you know, it's, it's, we, we fall into the trap sometimes of trying to play catch-up. And so, one of the important things about this effort is we have to make sure that we're looking ahead at that class of 25, the class of 26, those eighth graders, ninth graders, others, to make sure that they are not falling through the cracks. Because, once they get behind, it's a constant, I mean, most, many of them, Dr. Hill, never catch-up. And so, we're really trying to make a concerted effort. And let me just brag on this team for a minute. I don't, I haven't had a chance really to brag that much in the last few months. But, you know, when we got our ESR funds back in the spring, after Congress passed the Cares Act, they made these allocations. And, you know, our, our fellow states, you know, some of them, the, the effort was get the money out as soon as you can. You know, we've got these needs, these immediate needs. Well, what this team understood is, yeah, we have immediate needs, but we're going to have needs down the road. And so, we didn't spend all of our ESR funds early. You know, we, we held some back because our team understood, you know, when we get into school, we don't know what we're going to run into. One of the things that we've run into is this enrollment issue, or the kids showing up, the engagement. So, we had money available to do that. We had money available to buy PPE that we could set in reserve. So, just to know that you, you've got a team here that's very strategic thinking, forward-thinking, making sure that we're, we're always looking ahead to that time where we can't predict what's going to happen, but we can predict something is going to happen. And this is one of those things that I think is going to pay big dividends down the road, just by helping keep these kids from, some of them, from falling through the cracks.
Good question. I, I don't remember where we stand on micro-credentiaing as it relates to maybe CTE's role in that. But, to some of the things that Secretary Key was talking about, families, individuals are going to feel a, a need to really be able to work and, and to help. And the micro-credentiaing, I think, will help connect individuals to jobs as jobs open up. Are we still, are we, are those already all laid out? Is that something we're in the midst of continuing to, to validate with businesses?
Yes. So, we, we actually have a new employee who's really taking on the role of leading the whole work around micro-credentiaing. So, not just for, for teachers in terms of, it's very important for teachers because it also helps them with the, the designations for a, a master teacher or, you know, the, the designation on their licenses. But, also looking at ways that that can even be pushed down into the classroom so that students can earn those micro-credentials as part of leading to those industry-recognized certifications or, and/or with those work-based learning experiences. So, we do have someone that, within educator effectiveness, that's working on that. And then, we'll continue that work with CTE. And higher ed has always been very open also to be looking at some of the micro-credentials and the pathways as far as what they could lead to in terms of transcribable credit potentially.
Is a big push in Missouri, at least in Kansas City, and it's something we're working on with the foundation. If there's any interest in connecting those dots, please let me know.
Absolutely, yes. So, I, I would love to talk about that so we can stay updated.
Thank you.
Okay. But wait, that's not all. All right. So, I was going to say, where'd Stacy go? There she is. All right. So, Ms. Smith has an update from OCSS. We're going to, again, we're going to talk a little bit about Dollar Way, Little Rock School District, give you a status report on some of those things and, and really hopefully get everybody on the same page of where we are in the transition. So, I'll ask Stacy to take it away.
Okay. We're going to definitely have, so Stacy Smith, Office of Coordinated Support and Service. And we're going to talk, have two distinct conversations today, one around Little Rock and then one around Dollar Way. Okay? So, starting with the Little Rock School District, going through this conversation, she really wanted to hit the points of reconstitution for the Little Rock School District and the timeline of the new board, and then the responsibilities of that board and then this board. All right? And I've got Courtney Salas-Ford here to answer all the hard, difficult legal questions. As part of reconstitution, they had to have nine new election zones for Little Rock School District Board of Directors, which has been established. And then, they also had to have an election for a new nine-member board. That election's going to occur November 3rd. So, we're all in the process of that and hearing lots about it. So, let's, from that bullet point too, let's talk about this timeline. Courtney, do you want to talk about the timeline?
Courtney Salas-Ford. Yeah. So, there's a lot of information up on the, the slides, but we just wanted you to know kind of where this timeline came from. As Stacy said, the initial election will occur on November 3rd for all nine of those board member seats. There's a lot of timeframes in election law I learned. So, anywhere between November 5th and November 23rd is when the county clerk will actually certify those election results. Sometimes they said it only takes the two to three days. Sometimes it takes longer depending on mail-in votes, absentee ballots, you know, how quickly the different polling sites turn in their votes. So, somewhere between November 5th and November 23rd is when the actual results will be certified and the successful candidates notified. Within 10 days of being notified, each of those members has to take an oath before a, an individual authorized to administer that. authorized to administer that. So again, that's why you see that very large window of November 5th to December 3rd. Because they, if they get notified on the 5th, they could go take the oath that same day, or they could wait 10 days. If they don't get notified until the 23rd, again, they could wait until December 3rd. So there's just a lot of variance there that we have no control over. It's dependent on the county clerks, and then on the actual elected members themselves. If, in any of the nine elections, there has to be a runoff, meaning no one member gets a, more than a majority vote, then there has to be a runoff on December 1st. And then those same timelines kick in again. So somewhere between December 3rd and December 21st, the county clerk would have to certify and notify the qualified candidates. And then they would have their 10 days to take that oath. So again, very wide window, if that could be anywhere between December 3rd and December 31st. If a runoff is not necessary, or if all the stars align, and even with a runoff, everything is taken care of before December 17th, the Little Rock School District has already identified December 17th, we're going to a new slide, sorry. Little Rock School District has identified December 17th as their monthly meeting date. So if all the newly-elected board members have taken the oath and filed that with the county clerk's office, they could meet on December 17th, elect officers, and draw lots to determine the length of each term. However, if even one member has not followed all of those procedures, they cannot meet as a fully constituted board. And so they would have to wait until January 28th to the next regular meeting that's already been established by the Little Rock School District. So again, we've included within there all of the different reasons for these timelines, and we can't give you an exact date as to when the new board will take its authority and its, its be seated, is kind of the term used. It'll either be December 17th, or it'll be January 28th. On the date of that first meeting is the date upon which the Community Advisory Board will cease to function, and upon which they will be considered to have been returned to local control. And they will take up their daily duties, their regular meetings, again, nominating officers, et cetera. They have one year, so up until December 31st of next year, to get the required training. Additional training is usually and typically provided to board members sooner. That's just legally the timeline that they have to actually get that. Does anyone have any questions about the timelines? I know it's a lot of information. Again, it's in there, and I've included all the references to the sections as to why, and we will just continue to work with the, the school district to make sure that the board is getting, getting seated.
Thank you, Courtney. So establishing the board, or the election zones, and then the board was one and two. Item number three, you see up on the slide, is during the time that Little Rock remains classified in Level 5 Intensive Support. So even after they get their board, these were the three limitations that were put. The commissioner will no longer be responsible for the daily operations of the Little Rock School District or approvals. That will go to the newly-elected board, okay, with these three conditions that were outlined in the reconstitution. They will stay in that until they meet the exit criteria. That is a live link. I tried to make a one-stop presentation shop with all the links that you need, okay? So that exit criteria is the exit criteria that Little Rock School District would need to meet to be released from the conditions that are listed right there. The other two elements for reconstitution with Little Rock School District had to do with Hall High becoming the Hall Magnet High School, and with the West Little Rock High School of Innovation. So both of those have reconfigured this year and have opened up and are going. Right? So those were kind of the five points to reconstitution and the timeline with the board. So is there any discussions or questions related to Little Rock School District?
I, I know very little about it, except what I've read and learned. Did, who selected the current superintendent?
The current superintendent was appointed by the Secretary of Education.
Will he stay on, or will the board be looking for a new superintendent? That's one of the restrictions that the board voted to, to put in place. So under the statute, the, the board could return a locally-elected board with limited authority. The board put those three limitations on the authority, and one of those was the employment of the superintendent. So they, the board, until they exit Level 5, cannot hire or fire a superintendent, cannot recognize the, the teachers' union, or change the structure of the personnel policy committee. And they're limited in the filing of lawsuits against the state. Those are the three elements of, of restrictions.
Any other questions about Little Rock?
And I don't think the, the online agenda has been updated with Stacy's presentation. It has? Okay. I need to refresh then, my apologies.
Yep. Yes, I can do that. So back on this slide here where it talks about the exit criteria, when you go to that link, that is the live, live Google link that you have access to to view. That Little Rock actually puts their, their data in and their information. There's a folder on each one of the exit criteria in which we're loading information. Okay, so Dr. Owa and I meet monthly about that. They'll have a mid-year review where we'll go over the, the information and determine what their progress is, and then at the end of the year, we'll have another review. Okay? But again, they'll have to meet in all those areas of criteria that's been established to be released from the Level 5 Intensive Support. Okay, so let's move to Dollarway. So I really want to sit, to take a moment and kind of go through this slowly, because there are some big decisions to be made around the Dollarway School District. And we're right up against the, the timeline. And a lot of that is due to COVID. There were early discussions going on back in March, and everything just kind of got put on hold. But we are kind of, we do have some, some timelines that we have, we have to meet. So there is lots of information to be presented, and that's going to be presented in the November board meeting. So we'll talk about what's coming up. So what I want to do today, again, tried to create a presentation that had lots of links in it for you. I'm not going to open those. A lot of these you've already seen and have been presented to you. I wanted to put them all in one place. So as you're preparing yourselves for November, you have, you have some homework, okay, or some places to go to for information. So first off, I wanted to hit on what the exit criteria was for academics for Dollarway, okay? You know, they, a lot of the work that they were doing was around Solution Tree. And so a lot of the goals and exit criteria aligned with the same, that work from the department, from Solution Tree, and within the district. So those collaborative teams and regularly interacting, the idea that the school district is regularly monitoring instructional practices that are occurring in the classroom, that the school has clear, ongoing evaluations, okay, on methods of instructions for their teachers, based on multiple sources of data, and that it's tied to student achievement. All right? So those are, those are three big instructional pieces for teachers and for the district. That the curriculum and that the assessments were aligned to state and district standards, that the school manages its fiscal operations, that is, that supports a safe, supportive, and collaborative culture, and again, increases student achievement. So this was the academic piece. There was also an indicator in there that was quantitative based on the actual assessment the state gave, all right? So this last year, Dollarway did not participate in the state because we didn't have it, the state exam. However, we do have four years of previous state data, all right? So those were the exit criteria for Dollarway. So this next month in November, we're really going to kind of dive deeper into these. I can tell you that Dollarway has made progress, okay? We have seen growth. Can I confidently say to you today that they've met all of these? Probably not. Okay, and we're going to be able to show that as we get into some of the data pieces coming, moving forward. These are reports that you have been shared with you previously. They're all linked on one page in this slide, okay? So you can go back and look at what the actual support plan is. You can look at what the district support plan is. You can see the quarterly reports that we were updated throughout all of last year, okay? If you want to go further than, I didn't, I didn't go past this last year, okay? I felt like that was probably the most pertinent to, to where we're at right now. So those quarterly reports are there. In there, you can actually go back and see what their ACT Aspire scores were from previous years. So that, that information's in there. Whether or not they made their growth, that's in there. Their Dollarway Exit Plan is also loaded. And I also included, this may be the only one report that you haven't seen yet, is that last one that says 1920 Fall to Winter Assessments. The Assessment Unit upstairs, J.J. Walker, put together a report that took all of the assessment data that Dollarway had last year from fall to winter, from their K2 assessment using Renaissance, I believe, to their interims from ACT Aspire, where they were doing those interim assessments, and predicting how those students would do on that spring test. Okay, so you have, you have that included as well. So kind of a reports-to-revisit page for, for those of you who want to dig in and look at some of that. Dollarway is also in classification for fiscal distress, okay? For a school district to be released from fiscal distress, they have to have corrected the, the reasons why they were placed. The two reasons they were placed in fiscal distress, one was for a declining balance, and the other was for material audit exceptions. I can tell you today that the material audit findings and exceptions, that is, that has been cleared up. They had no material audit findings last year. They're currently in their audit right now, okay? So we should have those findings by the, by the end of the month, okay? So we'll know if there's, if it has anything else. We do not anticipate any type of material audit findings to come out of, out of this audit. However, the declining balance has not improved. If anything, it's, it's pretty bleak. And that information is in that fiscal distress plan. You'll see some of the latest data and the numbers showing that their current balance and where it's ending, okay? So that'll be in that fiscal distress plan. What I want you to know, in November, we will lay all of this out for you, okay, in a presentation, okay? But I, I'm trying to front-load you and give you information so that you can prepare yourself for what you're going to hear in November. So again, that's the link to the fiscal distress plan on that page. So one thing that I know that is very important to this board is that there has been a concerted effort to make sure that we have community input, and that we have heard from the community. So I want to let you know what's going on right now, and what's going to continue to move on for the rest of October and November. We have two stages of community input planned, and that is in partnership with WestEd. Okay? Now, WestEd is that third-party, unbiased, you know, it's a federally-funded group that's with our comprehensive center, okay? So they're unbiased, and that they're providing us an analysis, all right? They've got a whole team working on just Dollarway. Been very impressed with their work and commitment. Been very impressed with their questions and the data that they have seeked. We've sent, we've sent them so many documents that I'm, I'm hoping for some really good information coming out of it. Stage one is the stakeholder input that's currently happening right now. That's going on from Oc- October 6th through the 13th, okay? They have 19 one-hour virtual sessions scheduled, okay, in role-like groupings. So they have teachers together, they have students, they have administrators, they have community members, they have government folks. So they're trying to group people together. They have surrounding superintendents or district administration group together. The, the goal of this was to have them in small groups of three to six people on Zoom at a time, so that you can really have some conversation, and really get some authentic input. All of these sessions are being recorded and transcribed, so you will get all the information you want. You can read them, you, you'll be, you'll be able to see it. But they're also going to take that information, and it will help inform what they come back with in November, okay? So you can see they've got, how we've created, who's getting selected, is really about through personal phone call and contact, all right? Calling someone saying, hey, Susan, would you like to be a part of this? And could you get two of your friends to be involved? You know, so it's that word of mouth, and trying to make people feel comfortable coming in to really give authentic feedback on what's going in, going on with the Dollarway School District. Go one slide back here. So you see where it says Dollarway Community Input. Right below it, there's a link, Community Input Presentation. That's the actual presentation being used in these small-group community input sessions that are happening right now. The only thing that's not in that presentation is a video of me explaining the process, okay? It was supposed to be the commissioner, but we never got him on camera, so they had to settle for me. But you can actually see the presentation and the questions that are being asked. WestEd is actually facilitating the conversations, okay? And so, so they'll, they'll dig in and they'll ask more que- questions as, as things are being presented and, and talked about. So you can actually see the actual presentation being used. Stage two will occur November 17th and 20th. That is after the November 12th board meeting in which you guys hear this larger presentation, okay? So that will be done in four 90-minute sessions, larger groups will be, that'll be open to anybody who wants to participate. They'll have some small groups in that, they'll have large groups. There'll be opportunity to provide specific feedback on what was presented, so that people are actually attaching their comments to something, and not just, you know, what, what's out there, attaching it to something. There'll be a feedback survey that's also on. It'll be about a 15-minute online survey that will be posted that people can go on and do. And there'll also be an open public comment period where people can submit in writing. And again, all of that will be collected. So two different stages of community feedback and input there. So this is the, probably the most important thing, is the overview of the timeline, and commitments that I kind of, I kind of need as, as far as how we're going to organize this moving forward, to make sure that you have enough time to get all the information that you need and to be able to make a decision. Okay, so in September, WestEd conducted individual interviews. They went back and have interviewed, you know, Dr. Hernandez. They've interviewed Greg Rogers on finance. They've interviewed Barbara Warren. I think they've, they interview Barbara weekly. They meet and connect with her. So, so they're conducting their own inter- they've interviewed community people on individual sessions, trying to, again, gather information. We've been doing our data sharing, giving them information in request. October, we've got those small community input sessions going on right now, and WestEd will continue to do their analysis. In November, our goal is to come and present to the board, that will be done by the Office of Coordinated State Support and Service. I do it every time, Commissioner, I want to rename our office, and WestEd. So they'll be a part of that. It needs to be a set time in the agenda that, that you guys recognize, this is going to be a two- to three-hour presentation about Dollarway, okay? The minimum amount of time, and my, my belief is really two hours, up to three, to be, to be able to dedicate towards this information and the presentation itself within the agenda. So just as we're looking at the agenda building for November, just keeping that in mind, that this, this is something that probably needs to be set, whether it's in the first, early in the morning or in the afternoon, but that's something you guys can discuss when you want to see that in the agenda. Another thing that I'm going to ask that we go ahead and schedule is that we go ahead and schedule a working state board meeting after you hear the presentation, okay? And I have some, some possible week dates up there that you might consider. I want to be able to come and have this presentation with you guys on November 12th, let you walk away from it, kind, know what you're, dig back into it, read, ask your questions, find out what doesn't line up, see some of the community input that's coming through, and then bring you to a working board session that you have Barbara right there in the room. You have ADE people, you have OCSS, we have WestEd back, where you can ask her questions and, and kind of work through the different scenarios and, and get you to a point of, of a decision, okay? So those are, those are my asks today is scheduling set time in the board, and then also setting up a time for a working board meeting. I think we could probably do it in one working board session. It just depends on, you know, it, it could be two, but, but just knowing that, that that's something that, that needs to be set as well. And then in December, on the December 12th, it would be, it has a decision on that day, because they were taking over on December 10th. So that is our last day, okay? If you decided to set another date, an earlier date, or have an independent special session, you could do that, but it would have to be before December 10th. The last slide I put on the very end, these are articles or reports that are already happening within the community, that I wanted you to know and be aware of that's going on. These are, these are in the Pine Bluff Commercial, their local newspaper. The first link, though, is the Go Forward Pine Bluff Report. So they themselves hired consultants and have done a report, and have shared that with their community. Some of the articles are about that report. Some are positive, some are negative. But again, it's just trying to fill you in on some of the conversations that are occurring in Jefferson County around this conversation, okay? So that's, those were those. So that's what those end links are. So discussions or questions related to Dollarway.
This is Erin.
This is extremely well done, Stacy. Thank you. I just, I wanted to be clear. So the decision, clarity on the decision that needs to be made. Could you speak to that?
Yes, I can. So just as any other state or authority districts, you will have to determine, so first we'll have to determine, did they meet their exit criteria, okay? And as I've told you today, they're on fiscal, they're not going to meet their fiscal exit criteria, okay? So that leads you to in the legislation. And Lori, anytime I'm going wrong, you jump up and correct me, please. It gets into that conversation of annexation, consolidation, reconstitution, or if they could go back to receiving return for local control.
The data that would allow us to make that consideration is what we'll hear between now and December 10th?
Yes. So at the November 12th board meeting, what I'm doing with WestEd is WestEd is actually taking each of those scenarios and they're laying it out. Here are considerations. Here are benefits, here are negatives, here are things to think about if you choose to do this. This would be a very, you know, extreme. This could be moderate. This could be, you know, more on the conservative side. So they're kind of laying out some of these different scenarios for you to be able to walk through. And we'll say, here's what it looks like if they went back to local. Here's what it would look like under annexation, consolidation, or things to think about with reconstitution. And trying to lay that out in scenario types so that you can begin saying, "Nope, yes, maybe", and getting to a point of kind of getting to a decision point.
What's to me between annexation and consolidation?
Yes. Long as words got my back. So annexation is when another school district assumes control of another. So Dollarway School District would join another school district and become part of that school district. And that school district would become the administrative authority and governing body of that district. Do you want to add anything to that? Consolidation is when you take two or more districts and you pull them together into a brand-new district. And everybody kind of loses their identity and you start over.
Read the newspaper articles about the Go Forward Pine Bluff. To what extent were y'all involved or were y'all watching those meetings or what's that relationship been like?
So we've not been involved. However, they have invited us to listen to a presentation, which we did. We've connected them with WestEd. Ryan Watley, who is their CEO of Go Forward, he's actually done an individual interview with WestEd where they've collected information. They have their reports. You know, I looked for Mr. Watley or Dr. Watley, I'm sorry, to come and probably do public comment at some time, at some point. You do have his presentation, so if you have more questions on data or information that's in there, we'll make sure and extend an invitation to come to a working board meeting. But as far as the department working on that report, that was done, they did that on their own.
And that did include all the area school districts? But this is just looking right now, these interviews are just Dollarway?
Yes. The Go Forward analysis was really about Watson Chapel, Dollarway, and Pine Bluff. And so the decision that's before us is about Dollarway.
Thank you.
Just so that I'm sure what we're hearing, so next month is all the information and then December is the actual vote?
Yes, ma'am.
So today, we need to set the time for when the two hours will be?
What I would do is just you guys decide if there's something that you would like to schedule in the morning, like have a scheduled time in the morning or if you want it to be at the end during the commissioners' report. Where do you want it so that that can be organized? But just recognize that we need two to three hours.
And then we also need to set a date for the working?
For me. And on the slide, I did identify two different weeks that I thought, outside of Thanksgiving, the week before Thanksgiving and the week after for a working board session, that those would probably be the weeks you would look at.
November 6th through the 20th or November 30th through December 4th? So with that in mind, I'll take suggestions for whether we want to put that presentation in the morning or in the after, or later in the afternoon. I would say in the morning, so.
I would just think if we had to set a particular time, knowing our history of previous board meetings, that it's hard for us to stay on a particular time, that it's probably better to do it in the morning?
I agree.
I don't know enough about the agenda for that day.
I'm not sure we have that information right now. I mean, we obviously start developing next month's agenda pretty much the day or maybe even after the current month gets published. But I really don't have a good idea. I mean, as far as what next month's agenda will look like. You know, it could depend on PLSB cases and a number of things that could be happening. I could suggest that because until the last few months, the board had been in the routine of having Thursday and then Friday morning. You could look at Friday morning kind of as an option. And that way, you don't have to worry about a lengthy agenda on Thursday getting in the way of the time you need to go through this process.
So that would be November 13th?
I know sometimes y'all have a Veterans Day holiday in November or something because we usually didn't meet on Friday in November before.
Well, so that would be the 11th and that's on Wednesday, I think. So we should be clear.
Yeah, right, me too. I agree. So if, do we need to vote on that or we just need to decide? Okay, so if there's no issue with it, we're looking at Friday morning, the day of November 13th instead of Thursday so that we have plenty of time. So November 13th, does that sound good for everyone? Okay, November 13th, Friday. Okay, and then a day for the work session.
Can I make a comment real quick?
Yes, please.
The only comment I have on the week of the November 30th to the December 4th is that the second stage of stakeholder feedback would have occurred and you would have that information. Of course, if you wanted to do, try to do one and just process the information you received on the 13th and then try to do another one, but just keep that in mind. Of course, all the feedback we get, we'll make sure and get to you whether you have your working session before or after.
So if we have the work session the week of November 30th through the 4th, we'll have additional information available?
The stage-two stakeholder input would have occurred. And our plan for that is to take the presentation that was done for the board on the 12th is to put that out for the community to get feedback directly to that and comments about that.
Okay, do we want to meet on the Thursday of that week? That would be November 3rd? I'm sorry. December 3rd, I mean. You're not available. Okay, then we can pick another one. Let's see, Wednesday? Okay, okay. Well, what day? What day? Friday? Monday, Tuesday, Friday? Yes, so Tuesday, December 1st? Okay, Tuesday, December 1st. Let's do, what do we do? Look, it works for us. 10, if that works for everyone. Yes, I think that was what. It's two to three, two to three hours.
Yeah, for a work session. I think by the time you guys start digging in and you have Barbara there and ask, "I know this group, y'all start asking questions." And you've got to think about this too. On this one, you're really going to be trying to push to a decision, I mean, not a decision. But start trying to eliminate and looking at the different scenarios. It could be, it could be, it could be longer than three hours. It could be whatever you guys think you need. The presentation, I'm going to try to keep it to three hours. And it's presented and then we move away from it. And then come back to the work session to really dig into it.
So that sounds good. So we have November 13th, Friday. Let's see. We usually start those at nine, okay? Nine AM. And then we have December 1st, first Tuesday at 10 AM for our work session.
Things that would help. Is the more explicit you can be on the decisions that are the outcome or the output of each of these sessions, it really helps us anticipate then what input would we have to have to be productive in the work session. So, because you've done a beautiful job of that with the timeline. If you could think of it now in terms of work content, that would help too.
I'll work with Ms. Dean on maybe a kind of a working sheet or something to go through on the work sessions on how we can eliminate and make some decisions. So I'll work with you on that, that's okay.
Thank you. And thank you for putting all the links in one place. That's super helpful. Very helpful, yeah.
I will warn you that I sent links to Courtney and had half of them wrong at one time. But I have gone back and checked these. These should be right. They're in the agenda, but I will have Gina send it directly to you as well. Yep, so it's in the agenda, but I'll have Gina send it directly to you.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Anything that you need from me or anything that's not on here that you think you would like to have? Okay, thank you. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Ms. Dean.
I've got a paper one. New business. Alright, do we have any new business? Nope, okay. Public comment? Alright, well, if there's nothing else, then I'll take a motion to adjourn. We're done. All in favor? Let's go. We're done.